Pam Jagosh. She comes with experience in historic preservation from a previous community that she lived in over in Idaho Falls, where she's she went through the processes of helping them establish their historic walking tours. And a lot of, you know, has has that element of what other communities have done. And she can either maybe bring some of that here or maybe do something new with whatever our focus is on in that perspective. So two very stellar candidates for historic preservation in a way that I think is different and unique than what we've seen most recently. So with that, I would nominate those two to the Historic Preservation Commission. Well, they are, Mr. Dinger is here, but we don't let them speak till after they, unless you have questions that you'd like to quiz them on. But we don't want to scare them away. That's how I'm playing. So happy entertaining questions you all have at this time or comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Yeah, as we all know, I, I guess this is not the parks one that I was going to talk about. But historic preservation is an important aspect of Meridian, who we are and where we've came from and our roots. And, and I personally know Ms. Jagosh well, she's, she's highly qualified for this position. I'm extremely excited that she applied and has been given the opportunity to serve this community in this capacity. So congratulations, Pam, and excited to get to know John better.
With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
We don't necessarily have liaisons to these commissions anymore. And so we're not stepping on anybody's toes, but I'd move that we approve resolution number 22 dash 2309, appointing John Dinger and Pam Jagosh to the Historical Preservation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 22 dash 2309 is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the resolution is agreed to. John, would you like to come forward and say any comments?
Just want to thank you for this opportunity. Really appreciate being appointed to this. I do love history, I love Idaho and Western history. As I read a lot of Western history, one of the places that really doesn't have a lot written is Idaho. And when I look at Idaho history, one of the places that doesn't have a lot of writing is Meridian. So I'm really excited to just jump in here and learn everything. Help that body of history grow. Thank you.
Thanks, John. So counsel, next item up is resolution number 22 dash 2310, which is our appointments to the Parks and Rec Commission for Brandon Simpson and Mike Madellin. And you're going to have to excuse me moving forward and my notes from the rest of the applicants was unintentionally destroyed. So I don't have as much of my, it's all from memory at this point in time. And when you interviewed a lot of people, you hopefully you get it all right. But what I, what I can tell you about the two individuals here is Brandon brings a unique skill set to the position. He really looks at it from the recreational side of sports, but also the business side of sports. You know, someone who's been, who's active in softball leagues and, you know, has spent time down and say at the Sparks Nevada location, where they, they've really looked at how, how you can bring economic development to your community through recreational programs. And the value that that can bring to you, to your community is also has young kids that range, you know, eight months up to nine. So looking at the recreational programs from the youth aspect, and that's something that's been missing from something, you know, as our commission, people have aged up. That was one of the conversations with those chair and having that, someone with that younger youth perspective would be really good for them. Then on the other end is Mike Madellin and, and really the best way to describe him is a lifelong parks user, but an avid pickle baller. And I don't want that, I don't want that to dissuade some members of the council from that standpoint. But it, it, it does, it does, is the sport that is growing vastly in our area, having some of that knowledge is hugely important on the commission. He's grown up in the parks utilized and then all the events that we've offered as his kids have grown. His kids are now aging out of the home and looking for a way for himself to give back to the community. So I think that they really both bring important skill sets that are, will help the Parks and Rec Commission look at the services and programs that we provide. And I don't see either them online or in the audience, but we'll still be happy to answer any questions have about these two.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Know if Mr. Burnt had any other comments he was wanting to make about Park. I move that we approve resolution number 22 dash 2310, appointing Brandon Simpson and Mike Madellin to the Meridian Parks Commission.
I have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 22 dash 2310, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the resolution is agreed to. Item nine on our agenda is resolution number 222311, appointing Mandy Stoddard to the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission. Had a lot of interest in planning zoning commission as, as you can imagine. And I will kind of focus, go a little bit deeper into the next employment as well, just for some context. But we, we had Rhonda of, who was in the south part of our community, in our area of city impact. And she decided not to consider, continue going. We did not get anybody from the community from our area of city impact. You know, it's not required. It has been a practice that we've had for years through that process. But one of the important parts about, to me, when we look at playing zoning is having a good geographical distribution as best we can of, of people as well as finding the right person and the right temperament and it's going to fit in. And I, I want to point out, I did include all of the chairs of the commissions in these interviews. And these, these were joint discussions, joint recommendations for these positions. And so Mandy rose to the top in both helping distribute some of the geographic area. She lives more along near Eagle Road, kind of in that you stick to Fairview area, which is where a lot of the other applicants were really grouped around places where we already had other commissioners at that point in time, even though they provided a very unique skill set. This, this provided a little bit of a place where we don't have someone currently. And then her background, she has a wide variety of background from in the real estate industry, in the construction land development industry, but now she's in the business side of the world, not related to those industries. And so she's got, has a real level head. That was, you know, one of the things where Andy really talked about, you know, having someone that can really engage and hear both sides of the issue and really thought would mesh well with the rest of the commission. The other person that you'll be hearing about in, in the future, Mr. Castanelli had said that if we found somebody else, he would be willing to step down for the commission, which we did receive a resignation from him effective here in two weeks. So there will be another person that we'll be bringing forward from down in the Paramount region, a little further south from where Bill lives again, to try to keep some of that geographic representation on, on the commission. But just want to give you a full picture as we look at the appointment consideration here in front of you at this time. But I think that this will help provide continued balance to the Planning and Zoning Commission from a resident who's been very appreciative of our community services since she's been here in Meridian and wants to give back to the community and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
We touched on how vital and how important our Planning and Zoning Commission, I think all of our commissions have done a really great job. But I think our Planning and Zoning Commission has really been working diligently to try and represent our city and provide good recommendations to us. So I'm excited about this nomination. So if there's no other comments, I'd move that we approve resolution number 22 dash 2311, appointing Mandy Stoddard to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 22 dash 2311, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the motion is agreed to. Ms. Stoddard, would you like to come forward and say, make any comments? And you get used to hearing that a lot, so.
Okay. No, thank you for the opportunity. I really look forward to serving my community and I appreciate it a lot.
Thanks, Mandy. The final item before you is resolution number 22 dash 2310 for our Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Here we have two individuals and this was really, the impact fee traditionally has people that kind of are assigned to different parts of our city, parts of our departments that they're there to help be involved in and understand, to provide feedback through that impact fee process. And so the first one, individual Stephanie Hanson, she, she applied for the Parks and Rec Commission. But, you know, in, in further conversations with her, we felt she would be a really good fit onto this because A, she has a love and interest in parks. But she also, she's an attorney and I think that having that legal perspective, not to say that the, our legal department doesn't provide good, good guidance, but the analytical mindset and that's, I'm analytical. So I think that having a couple of people with good analytical mindsets on impact fee makes a whole lot of sense. And, and Stephanie, she just wants to, she wanted to get involved and she wanted to serve. And she was happy to step into this role and I, and, and quite frankly, work with, you know, Steve and the parks and be there to help make sure that they're fairly represented on the commission. She may actually get involved a little bit in the Parks and Rec Commission so that she understands a little bit about what's relevant and what's moving forward. Then we have that between Steve and her and Todd from that standpoint and help her serve in that area. And then Melissa, you know, I've, I met most of years ago in various ways and our paths have continued to cross throughout life. I know she sometimes played, has played pickleball match or two against a few people as well. So her, the paths are crossing, but she definitely has a lot of those same analytical skill sets. Is there a long time Meridian resident, understands the value of the services that we receive, the need of this, to continue to provide those services and the costs to provide those services. And, and I can just speak to her as a person and her willingness and ability. And sometimes that's what happens when your house becomes a little bit more of an empty nest. You look for ways to get back to the community and I can say that's what we're seeing with Melissa. So happy to move forward these two for your consideration at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Sometimes wish that all of our citizens could attend an impact fee committee meeting. I think it's very eye opening and I, I appreciate Councilmember Burnt being a past member of that and the impact that he's brought to that impact committee. And I have no doubt that Stephanie and Melissa are going to do a great job. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, move that we approve resolution number 22 dash 2312, pointing Stephanie Hanson and Melissa Carrico to the Meridian Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Sorry. I have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 22 dash 2312, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the resolution is agreed to. Melissa, would you like to come forward to here? And I feel the mention, Fire Department is where Melissa's kind of filling into that fire department connection on the impact fee committee.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. I want to tell you, I'm like excited to be a part of the impact fee committee and I thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thanks, Melissa. Thanks for being here. And you, you both are welcome to stay if you'd like to for the evening or not. So it's your, your call. Don't feel obligated. It's the case maybe. I hear we might be here a while, so I don't know. All right. Thank you, counsel. With that, we'll move on to item now 11 was 13 on the agenda. The Parks and Recreation Department Cooperative Agreement between Ward and the City of Meridian for financial contribution to support licensed recreational activities. And I will turn this over to Mr. Sedaway.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're coming for you tonight to propose a series of agreements that would have us take over the operations of the Meridian Pool from West Meridian Recreation District and eventually the, the ownership. Ward approached us, well, it's been out there, I think, from one of the mayor's state of the city addresses a while ago. But formerly Ward approached us that last fall to start talking about in a little more earnestly, the idea of taking over operations of the pool is this last fall. Since that, over these last several months, we've been working with Ward, with finance, a lot with HR on the staffing side, with legal on the agreements and the mayor's office to get to where we are tonight. I want to publicly mention some kudos to Garrett White, who's done probably the majority of the heavy lifting to get us to where we are. I don't know if you know this, but he comes to us from his, he's been with us for quite a while, but his previous job actually included working with a pool. So he has some experience that is definitely going to benefit us. I'd like to, I'd like to turn this over to him. Garrett will provide a summary of each of the agreements and review the proposal that we have with council. He can also answer any questions there may be about the inspection process and bid process that's underway. So with that, I'll turn it over to Garrett.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in front of you guys, like Steve said, are three different agreements. We've been talking with Ward over the past several months, just in discussions on what this really is means of us still operating the pool and maintaining it. The first agreement that you're going to see is the Cooperative Agreement for Financial Contribution from Ward in an amount of $1,263,555. In addition to that, Ward's contribution, the city would be collecting all the revenues from the pool, which are estimated about $264,000 based on previous seasons. The second one is a license and maintenance agreement that actually allows us to operate, maintain the pool and the small park off of Tammy Street, which they call Sellers Park, or we're called the Small Park off of Tammy Street. The third agreement, the third agreement is really just an amendment to the license and maintenance agreement with Lakeview Golf Course. And really what that does is just extending the termination date to match all three of these agreements. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Garrett. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Garrett, I just want to make sure I, I heard you right on the budget amendments amounts. I think the amount you said allowed was different than I think the number. And I just didn't know if, if I misheard you or if we swapped some numbers. The, the number that I've got before me is 1.1 million 528,160 dollars.
So, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh. So the total from Ward will be the two, 1.2 million 63,555 plus the revenues of 264,605 for the total of 1.5 and some change. Yeah. Good question. Thanks for asking.
Councilman Borton.
Here it is. One of these agreements identify ultimate transfer of ownership of the asset.
I believe so. At that one, it would be the license and main agreement when it ends. The actual ownership agreement will come separately. And I think Bill can probably answer that question better than I can. But I believe it's a second, separate agreement at the end of the use for the ownership.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, Garrett's correct. I think the anticipation is that would be the next stage of transfer would be a separate agreement then. Right now, this is really just maintenance and operations and the transfer of funding.
Councilboard.
That, that, to my understanding, yes, that's what Ward wants to do. They want to be done at the end of this agreement and transfer the ownership of the pool and the small park.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Chair.
Just a quick follow up on that point. I recall there was some flexibility in terms of the actual termination of the asset as they're collecting tax revenue and potentially sharing it. Do we have any clarity on the date that the asset will actually be transferred? Or are we intentionally keeping that open?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater, Councilwoman Strater, that I believe is, they're supposed to end on September 30th of 2024. And the intention, I believe, is to have the ownership at the same time at the end of that. That is the intent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. I mean, I think that speaks to the ultimate intent of this agreement, which is ultimately to save taxpayers' money by dissolving a taxing entity that is redundant. Appreciate that.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Other questions? I move that.
Councilman Holton.
I just wanted to make sure, Bill, on, on that First Amendment to License and Management Agreement, in, in that section, in the whereas, it talks about the term of agreement set in on September 30th, 2023. And then in, in, under Section 1B Term of Agreement, it ends on September 30th, 2024, unless the parties mutually agree. And I would assume the lower body is part of it, not the whereas. Is, is there some, one being 2023, one being 2024? I wasn't sure what the issue was there. I just happened to catch that this time reading through it.
So, Mr. Members of the council, certainly the clause within the contract is what is controlling, not the whereas clause. And I guess I'm not seeing that whereas, so. Then the maintenance one, is that what you said?
Yeah, this is on the maintenance and operation license.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, first.
We can correct that, so.
Okay.
All right.
Councilman, Councilman Cavanagh.
I move that we approve item 13, a cooperative agreement between the Western Nader Recreation District and the City of Meridian for financial contribution to support licensed recreational activities in the City of Meridian related to the maintenance and operation of Meridian Community Pool and the Tammy Park, also known as Settlers Village Park in the City of Meridian.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Do I have any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The item is agreed to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. The next item up is the Parks and Recreation Department Fiscal Year 2022 Net Zero Budget Amendment in the amount of $1,528,160. Mr. Sedaway?
I just went over the, the numbers, but just to clarify for the record, we are requesting spending authority on a total of the 1.528160, $1,528,160 for this net zero budget amendment. That's the amount that'll be contributed from Ward. The breakdown of that is just over the 1.2 million coming from them directly. And the rest, the remainder of 264,000, that balance comes from forgone revenues from the pool that they will allow us to retain as we bring them in. We've worked out, we've worked with finance to propose a division, initial division between pool and golf, but would ask that we be able to work with finance to shift funds accordingly if more or less is needed for one or the other. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Steve. So this is for fiscal year 2022. Does that mean they have essentially until the end of September to actually transfer those funds? Or how will the timing of that work in relationship to the cost the city will incur for capital projects and maintenance?
Yeah, good question. It's actually spelled out in the agreement that you just approved. There's two separate payments that they have to make and that's based on their collection of, of tax receipts. So I don't remember the dates off the top of my head, but there are two dates stipulated when they will make their payments.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 22 Net Zero Budget Amendment for the amount of $1,528,160. Says to the Western Nader Recreation District, but I think it's from the Western Nader Recreation District for Meridian Pool and Lakeview Golf Course.
I can the motion.
I have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Pearl. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Next item up is a Parks and Recreation Department Fiscal Year 22, 2022 Net Zero Budget Amendment in the amount of $89,918. And turn this over to Mr. Sedaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This one is really just a shift within our existing budget. We have been experiencing staffing shortages on our seasonal labor side for the last couple of years. We've been unable to hire the number of seasonal positions that we need to successfully maintain our, our system. Staff have been stepping up and working overtime and taking on extra duties. But, you know, that can only be a short fix for so long. It also affects our customer service and causes deferred maintenance projects that have to be pushed out. We do think that we would be more successful at attracting full-time labor. And we've worked out with finance, a net zero budget amendment, where all the funds needed to cover those two positions would come from our seasonal staff budget. So we are just proposing a shifting of funds, which amounts to about 18% of our current seasonal labor budget to hire two full-time staff as maintenance techs to give us the coverage that we need. That's in the amount of $89,818. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I don't have a question. I just want to say how excited I am about this. As the Parks liaison last year, Steve and I had a lot of conversations about how challenging it was to retain, to hire and retain seasonal employees. So I am excited about the consistency this will bring to the department and happy to see this on the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
After agree with Councilman Pearl, I think as our park system continues to grow, having permanent, consistent maintenance staff is, is the right decision. So I appreciate your forward thinking on this, Steve. And I'm happy to make the motion that the council approves the Parks and Rec Department Fiscal Year 2022 Net Zero Budget Amendment in the amount of $89,818. The transfer, transfer of seasonal groundskeepers to two full-time parks maintenance employees.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve the Net Zero Budget Amendment. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton. Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and the item is agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you to our public this evening for allowing us to get through the items that we normally would do on our six o'clock, but had to shift this evening and they were timely. So with that, we will move on to public hearing items this evening. First item up is a public hearing for Meridian U-Haul Storage Moving and Storage. We'll open this public hearing age 2021 dash 0101 with staff comments.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to, from Bach Associate Planner with the City of Meridian, good evening. Okay, this is a development agreement modification. Property consists of 6.86 acres of land. It's a zoned CG, it's located at the northwest corner of East Overland and South Locust Grove. It's right behind, pretty close to behind the, the gym, the climbing gym where that is. Just, just a quick history to kind of tell you where we, how we got here. Okay, so this is a, this is a proposal for a development agreement modification to allow self-storage rental and outdoor display of vehicles and equipment and accessory retail for a U-Haul business. There's a conditional use that is being processed concurrently with this, coming in front of you next Thursday. It was supposed to come in front of you last Thursday, but they didn't post the sign correctly. And they were able to do it for this, but not for that. So it had to be continued. Property consists of three lots, just a little less than seven acres. It was annexed into the city in 1999 as what was called the Overland Storage Annexation. The development agreement for that allows only, so it's very specific. And it only allows a construction, development and use of a self-storage facility. It even says it shall be eight buildings of various sizes. The conditional use was approved for this following that annexation, but for whatever reason, the self-storage facility was never built. So this property was annexed, zoned, and there was a development agreement written specifically for the reason of self-storage. Since that time, just recently, staff from Since that time, just recently, staff and the applicant have had numerous discussions regarding the location of a new facility. We've looked at lots of different places, and due to the location, the surrounding uses, the zoning, and that this was already annexed for the purpose of a self-storage, this particular location was selected. However, in addition to the self-storage, as typical for a U-Haul facility, they also intend to display some of their trucks and equipment rental and have the little store where you can buy the moving items. Unfortunately, because the development agreement is so specific, they actually can't do that. So, the point of this DA mod is to remove that specific language and to let the site plan and the elevations that they are bringing to the Planning Commission Thursday govern the site. But as far as uses go, it would just fall back to CG, which is what it is zoned now. So, again, the CG allows vehicle sales, rental, and service as a permitted use, the equipment, as well as the equipment rental, sales, and service. But then self-storages are allowed by conditional use and warehousing and outdoor storage as an accessory use. So, all this working together, basically, they can do what they want under a conditional use. And just in case you are interested, here is the site plan of what they want to do. I believe that there are six buildings, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. These are, staff has spent quite a bit of time working with the applicant on the elevations and the perspectives. Certainly, we have some recommendations for conditions of approval to the Planning Commission next Thursday. Like, we don't like the exposed stairs, so we're going to ask them to come up with a better way to screen that and some work on the doors and that. Most of that can happen administratively. But with that, this is a relatively simple case in front of you tonight, council, and I could stand for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ellen. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. Ellen, in the bottom of Page 2 in the staff report, it, the proposed section that would be modified, am I understanding correctly that it says the construction, development, use, and maintenance of a mini-storage facility consisting of at least eight buildings of various sizes? And you had mentioned that there were six buildings?
So, the applicant, I could be wrong. It could be eight. The applicant proposed that language, so they struck some language and added the language that they were proposing. And staff is recommending all that language just be taken out altogether, that it would just fall back to the CG Zone District and would just refer to the site plan and the elevation. So, that language would be completely gone. It is a little confusing, so I apologize if I wasn't clear about that with you, councilperson.
Mr. Mayor, one follow-up.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. So, the way this reads, if, I don't know how exactly it will be changed, if it's going to be modified from what's in the staff report. But is it saying that the included in those eight buildings is the self-service storage, the showroom? Or are those in addition to the storage, mini-storage facility?
So, the self-storage facility would be the primary use. And the outdoor storage and rental, the retail and all that equipment rental would all be an accessory use to that self-storage. But again, we're recommending that that entire language just be stricken. There wouldn't even be any mention at all of what the use is. It would just be CG. And it would, and it would be the typical generally will conform to the site plan and elevations approved on this date.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant online? Did I see their name?
Mr. Mayor, he's online.
Okay. If the applicant would like to unmute themselves if they're not and be recognized for 15 minutes for any comments.
Hello, this is Gur Noor. I am representing America Real Estate, based in Phoenix, Arizona. And America is the wholly owned real estate subsidiary of the U-Haul system.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Gur Noor Cora. The address is 2727 North Central Avenue, 2500 Phoenix, Arizona.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are you, do you have any comments you'd like to add to what staff already stated?
Um, not really, but I can, yeah, Ellen did a really great job explaining everything for us. And I can answer any questions that anyone has. And I can definitely add one more thing. As far as U-Haul is concerned, we have done such projects over 2,000 different locations in the United States and Canada. And I can vouch for this one thing, that U-Haul never leaves a location. It always stays functional. We might do some upgrades. We might use more services. But we never leave a location. It's always functional. So, you will never have a site just sitting in your city and not being used. But I am here if you have any questions regarding the site plan that you're looking at or anything else that I could help you with.
Thank you. Council, any questions to the applicant? Hearing, seeing no questions, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone to sign up for my testimony?
Mr. Mayor, there was no one that signed up online over here.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item at this time? Or anybody online would like to provide testimony? You can use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of Zoom. See nobody in either location? Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. Then with that, council, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Question for Alan. At the start of your presentation, I see this, this application disconnected from the CUP. Why would we act on it until they're together? It just seems like you would have both of those addressed together, and proceeding today doesn't really advance it because it's still contingent on that. Push them, push them together and have the DA available if necessary.
Mr. Borton, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. They are sort of two separate things. One is contingent upon the other. So, if this wasn't approved, the project would be dead. And if the conditional use wasn't approved, it would still be dead. But they are two separate things. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not. We, the, this, this doesn't, this does not have to go to the council or to the commission, the development agreement mod. And the conditional use actually stops with the Planning Commission. It was hopefully going to be the other way until they didn't post the site right. So, so they're, so they're both one person, what, one person? They're both one-body hearings. It's just this one ended up being before because of the posting issue. If, if you don't approve this, the conditional use is dead. And if they don't approve the conditional use, then it's dead anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Members of the council, Councilman Borton, maybe, I don't know why it was ever the other way around. It never should have been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the CU because they can't approve a CU if the use isn't allowed. So, the use has to be allowed by the development agreement before they consider a conditional use. So, actually, the error of not posting it properly works better in the applicant's favor because they actually would have had to hold it at P&amp;Z anyway because they wouldn't know if this council would approve the development agreement. So, it has to be in this order for it to make sense logically in the code.
What he said.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Unless there are any more questions, I move that we close the public hearing.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm happy to make a motion. For me, I think I'm comfortable approving it, given that references directly to site plans and elevations. So, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve File Number H 2021-0101 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Item H 2021-0101. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton. Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thanks, Ellen.
Thanks, Ellen.
Next item is up for this evening is public hearings for Rackham East Council Review, HCR 2022-001, and Rackham East Eagle View Apartments, H 2021-0075. We will open both these public hearings together. And I will turn this over to Mr. Hood for staff comments. Mr. Burnt.
So, normally, I recuse myself with writing projects. However, I don't do any of their multifamily work, so I'll be, I don't have a confidence.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, Caleb Hood, Meridian Planning Division. I am pinch hitting this evening for Sonia. She presented this application at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, I will forward on their recommendation to you this evening for the Rackham East Eagle View Apartments. The applications before you are an annexation, a preliminary plat, a CUP, and a city council review. So, a little bit more on those applications. The annexation is, includes 25.76 acres of land. The preliminary plat consists of two multifamily residential building lots and six commercial building lots on 29.7 acres. And the CUP is for multifamily residential development consisting of 396 units on 15.94 acres. The city council review application is to, is in regard to the private usable open space associated with the multifamily residential development. And I'll get into all of those a little bit more here as I get into the presentation a little bit more. The property is located just south of I-84, as you can see on the screen, and about a quarter mile east of Eagle, north of Overland, off of Rolling Hill Drive. There is a small portion of the property that is already annexed and zoned in the city with CG zoning. It's right here, and the majority of the site is currently R1 in Ada County, proposed to be CG, although staff is recommending an R4D zone, which more closely represents the proposed land use for a majority of this, which is multifamily. Access is currently provided to the site off of Rolling Hill Drive. And we'll speak a little bit more of, about Rolling Hill Drive here in a minute. But that does provide current access to the site. There's also access provided through the new project to the east, again, which a portion of this is being part of the subject site plan for this application. So, access actually can be provided from the west as well into the site. Here is a copy of the annexation boundary. So, again, this isn't the entire site. There is some, just to the west, it's already annexed and zoned. Here is the preliminary plat. Not a whole lot to look at here. Here's largely the multifamily areas. That annexation boundary then would come here. And again, here's the existing part that's already in the city. And then here's your commercial lots along the I-84 frontage. Landscape plan, well, I think we'll look a little bit more at the detailed landscape plan with the multifamily project. There's not a whole lot of landscaping to look at here with the preliminary plat. I'm going to move along. Here's the overall site. So, again, the multifamily lots are here, the extension of the access in from Silverstone into the subject property. There's a 14-foot-wide sliver that I'll also point out. Doesn't show up very well on that exhibit. Along the eastern boundary of the property, I'm under the understanding that the applicant is in the process of purchasing that, but hasn't closed on the property as of yet. And so, one of the things to point out to you is that the commission did recommend a new condition requiring an ingress egress easement be provided to that property if it's not obtained by the developer for access so that it doesn't become landlocked in the case they aren't able to acquire it. Go back to this one. As I mentioned, access to the site today is off of South Rolling Hill Drive. It's an existing rural local street that serves the residential properties to the south. So, rural residential properties, again, in the county. And then there's two driveways from, again, from the west, from Silverstone Way. Rolling Hill Drive is not improved to urban street standards. So, it is, I think, about 24 feet wide of pavement. Doesn't have any streetlights, doesn't have curb gutter and sidewalk. And for that reason and some others, the applicant is proposing access to the site from the city properties to the west with emergency access only to Rolling Hill Drive. There has been some back and forth, and I do have a, an updated memo from ACHD with some new traffic analysis that was done. The staff report that ACHD provided, the city did have a couple of options for the applicant that would make Rolling Hill, they're an opportunity, if Rolling Hill is improved to some of ACHD standards, to use that as access. It's my understanding, and I'll let the applicant speak a little bit more to that, that they are proposing to just leave that as a ballard emergency access only to their southern boundary and not make any additional improvements at this time, but provide ballards so access again to the site would not come in from the south. The Ridgemaw Canal traverses the, generally, to the east side of this property. The council is requesting a waiver to allow the canal to remain open and not be piped. That is pretty typical. The Ridgemaw, as you know, is a large facility. I can't think of a time we've ever required it to be covered. But they're proposing a six-foot-tall, open-vision wrought-iron fence along the canal to preserve public safety there. I will just note here, and I'll remind you if you forget, but in any motion to approve this project, if you could explicitly state that you're, that you're granting them a waiver from the requirement to cover the Ridgemaw, that's appreciated. The multifamily development that you see on the screen includes, again, 396 units. There is a mix of Studio 1 and 2-bedroom units. The gross density of the development is 24.8 units per acre, which is consistent with the desired MUR, Mixed Use Regional Designation on the Future Land Use Map Conference Plan. So, here's the site and landscape plan I mentioned earlier. I'm going to kind of go back and forth between the open space exhibit, which is on the site plan now, and the amenity and open space exhibit that I flashed for a second. The applicant has requested alternative compliance, the private usable open space standard, which has more to do with the individual units than common open space. Staff did approve a reduction to our standard of 80 square feet per unit, a 20% reduction. But the applicant is proposing zero for the studio units, 0%, 54 to 60 square feet for the one-bedroom units, and 58 to 85 square feet for the two-bedroom units. Again, their justification that was provided to staff was because they have extraordinary common open space amenities in the pools and the clubhouses and the green spaces and some of the ancillary amenities that are within them. The private usable open space, such as patios and balconies, decks, those types of things. That was the request they're asking for, and we didn't believe that that meant the intent of the code. So, we did not approve that, but that is for you to see.
Hey, Caleb, what just, I don't mean to interrupt. So, so basically, just a question, clarification. So, the only difference between, the difference between common open space and what they're requesting a waiver on is just like patios?
Right.
With the individual units themselves.
So, Mayor, Councilman Burnt, yes. So, there are two, two different requirements. One is for common open space for the project that, again, is common and shared, and anybody can use it practically at any time. And then we have a separate based on, for each, for each individual unit, their own private area that they can keep their bike, have a cigarette, whatever they're going to do in their own little private space. And that is what the applicant is, has requested the relief from to provide for the studios, none of that. So, anything, once you walk out your door, you don't have anything. It's common or private or something else. And then for the one and the two beds, they are proposing some for those. So, again, kind of a sliding scale that I read to you there. But again, studios, no private outdoor. So, indoor, right, you're renting your unit. So, anything inside the walls would obviously be private, but nothing outdoors that would be, that you could call your own outside. outdoors that would be, that you could call your own outside. I will just note, you know, this is something we have back on our, the UDC focus group to discuss some more. As a topic, it's not the first request that we've had this way. So it is something to bring back up and, and just reevaluate and see if this is the right code for the city. But right now that is what we have on the books. And again, their justification for not providing was, was that this is the, again, common open space and amenities is good enough that not, not, that it's not needed for, for some of them or at that square footage. I hope that answered the question.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Ms. Strayer.
I apologize, but maybe because we're on that point and I'm not clear, maybe better to just stop now. So my understanding Caleb of our open space, qualified open space calculation is that it's driven off of not only the building footprint, but also the unit count. What I think I just heard you describe was individual open space attached to each unit. But I just want to make sure that I'm not misinterpreting something. I always thought that our qualified open space calculation was driven off of not only the square footage of the building, but also the unit count and unit size.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strayer, yeah. So again, two separate things. You, you have that correct. It is the acreage and number of units for common usable qualified open space. That's not what they're asking for relief from. It is the individual, again, think a balcony or a patio or something that's fenced that I walk out of my slider of my back door and I have a little something that I can stand in that no one else can because it's mine and attached to my unit versus the, what you just described, which is the common tot lots and playgrounds and swimming pools and those types of things. So two separate things, but and again, I'll let them make, make their pitch to you more, but they're saying our common amenities are so nice. We don't need to provide to the level the city requires those private areas for them because there's enough of the, or high quality and enough of the other types of open space.
Perfect. Thank you.
Also more questions on this?
Couple more things I think in my presentation. So off-street parking was also something that was talked about in, in the staff report and at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The UDC does require a minimum of 660 standing standard parking spaces. Of that, 348 should be covered and 14 spaces for the clubhouse. So they're providing 651, which is nine spaces below the minimum. We did work with the applicant and they are proposing some parking along the drive aisle here. So that was something that the commission talked about. There's a condition, the staff report talking about meeting the UDC standards for parking. I believe they've complied with that, but that is something that will be verified when we get into CCC. And again, maybe they want to talk about that a little bit more in their presentation or if the council has any questions about that. Some of the, the discussion was, is it on street or is this on-site parking? If you put it along, along the street and proximity to the clubhouse and some of these other places, how usable would it be? So that, that is again, in the staff report and originally with what they submitted, they were nine parking stalls short, but I've been working to gain compliance with the code since. I already kind of flashed the the building elevation. Sorry, I, I'll let you maybe talk about your amenities a little bit more, but here, here's a quick slide of, of some of the amenities that they're proposing with this project. And again, we can jump back here if you want me to linger a little bit longer on this slide. And then their pedestrian network. So here are your sidewalks, your connections, your crosswalks, showing the connectivity, at least internally on this project. And then the building elevations, I flashed those pretty quickly, but there are four, four-story multifamily residential buildings and the fitness and leasing buildings. And then there are two five-story office buildings proposed. These have been given a preliminary review, but, but final review will obviously occur with CCC and design review, and they'll need to comply with the, all the design standards and the architectural standards manual. But I haven't seen anything in Sonia's report that said that there's anything glaring with these that they couldn't comply, but a detailed review of, of these buildings has not been performed at this point of the application. So. So in, in review, the, the commission did have a couple of changes again, including a condition for construction traffic for the proposed development to access the site from the west via Silverstone Way rather than from South Rolling Hill Drive. That was part of the applicant's testimony there. And I do know I saw some emails even late this afternoon. They've been working with the fire marshal on that and what type of ballard gate chain should be out there. So that is one of the things that the commission added to the staff report. And then a requirement that the applicant submit a copy of the purchase agreement for the out parcel at the north boundary in lieu of granting an access easement to that property. So one of the others, but they did add that, that condition just in case. So if they provide that later, we don't need to have the recorded cross access if that's done in a timely manner. So I already mentioned from my standpoint though, a couple of things to think about as you're reviewing this project in any motion to approve the project would be the waiver for the Ride and Bar Canal and the applicant's request. Oh, I didn't touch on this one. I'm sorry. In the staff report, condition, DA provision number one asked the applicant to submit a development agreement modification before council. At this point where that, that hasn't been done. So it's not before council. So it just a tweak to that, that it'll be a new development agreement. Or it gets a little bit tricky is that one piece that's already annexed, but we can figure that out. I'm confident with the applicant. I don't want to get bound up today about figuring out DA mod, new DA, there may be both and the rezone for that and zoning of that, and just making sure that all comes together. There are some, again, some emails like this afternoon, and I think with legal descriptions and applications, we can clean that up. Sorry, do you have a question, Councilman here?
Also questions.
So, Councilmember. More clarity in what you just mentioned. It was I don't quite follow what you just said. Sorry.
So Sonia had a condition. I didn't write the page number down. I can look at it though. It's the first development agreement provision on page. Almost there. And essentially it's what our standard language is for a new annexation. It's just prior to annexation ordinance approval, record a development agreement. So that, that's basically the change to that is to strike through an amended, an amendment to the existing development agreement. It's going to be a new development agreement for the project that's before you this evening. So a little bit of semantics there, but it, again, just timing wise, that, that didn't happen prior to council. So we'll go ahead and do a development agreement, a new development agreement for this project. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
So those are the two kind of cleanup things, at least from my standpoint. If you want to change any other things regarding the private usable open space we talked about, that's at your discretion. Staff's not requesting that of you. And then again, maybe a clarification from the applicant even on the ACHD staff report. And if they're, the timing of when the ballard will happen and if a ride away vacation is also going to need to occur to vacate the ride away north into their site. So just the timing and how they intend to use Rackham, I think would be good part of the discussion as well, since that's been most of the concerns from the neighbors to the south. To that point, we do have as of three o'clock or so this afternoon, there were two letters that we had received since the Planning and Zoning Commission from Chris Maoka, apologize, and Michael Blowers. So those are there. If you haven't looked at those, those came in since the Planning and Zoning Commission. And without Mr. Mayor, we'll stand for any further questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel on the initial questions for staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. Thank you, Caleb. Can you help me understand the applicant's proposal for the two commercial buildings within the six lots? So the concept plan shows the two buildings there, but I'm trying to understand why plat it for six commercial building lots if they're only actually going to do two commercial buildings.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro. It's a good question and I have not asked the applicant that. And again, this is Sonia's project. So I'm kind of curious myself, but maybe if they can work that into their presentation, I could venture a guess, but I do not know.
Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. So the other alternative compliance items that are on page one of the staff report, those are going to be considered with the CUP application, correct? So we're only going to be concerned with the the balcony space in, in our conversation today, not the parking or any of those things.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pro. To me, it's all on the table. So if you have, if that's part of your motion and you feel one way or the other to make this project go, you want to approve it contingent on that, you are the decision maker. So you can address any of those things. And again, we're at annexation stage two, you got annexation and a CUP. So yeah, again, anything you see or don't see that you want to change, that's within your purview this evening.
Council on additional. Councilwoman Scher.
Thank you. Thank you, Caleb. My questions are around the flume and how this kind of fits with our plan holistically for this area of the city. If we, you know, kind of look at this area in the CG zone, I guess my first question is going to be, do we think holistically, we're getting the right amount of commercial out of this area as a whole? And my second question is going to be, you can't come up with two more different residential uses right next to each other. How do we feel this addresses transition or what, what in the flume addresses transition and what would we expect to see between such different residential uses?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strayer, good, good questions. The first one I guess is a little bit a personal choice or flavor or definitely opinion. We don't have a specific target of commercial to residential in our mixed use regional designations. I will call to your attention though, you know, there, most of this mixed use regionally designated area, aside from the stuff that hasn't been annexed yet, still in the county, has come in with commercial. So this is the first residential component in, in there. Yeah, 384 lots or 60. Yeah. This, I mean, that's, that's quite a few residential, but overall in the, in the the designation, I think we're doing pretty well if we have roughly 20% or so of, of those mixed use regional areas for, set aside for non-residential uses. So again, that's my opinion. We have some ranges in our comp plan that talk about that and wanting a mix of uses, but unlike some other mixed use designations, I'm not concerned at this point with the percentage of our mixed use regional that is going to residential. Your second question is a valid one and I'll just be frank with you. I would much prefer that this area transition into the city from Overland to the freeway, not the other way around, for some of the issues that Rolling Hill Drive creates. Naturally, you want to use Rolling Hill to get here and we're ballarding it and kind of making a workaround, but to me, the natural progression would be to have some of those lots redevelop in the city. And again, work that so that your improvements to the road and your other infrastructure like sewer and water can progress to the north towards the freeway. So you're not left with this enclave of county properties. The comp plan does talk about transition and buffers and things like that. But maybe not to the, that extent, right? It's talking, you know, 20, 25 feet to non-residential uses. But it really doesn't talk about, aside from creating enclaves, doesn't really address a appropriate transition of city lots or density to county, one, two, three acre parcels. So I'm sorry, I'm really not allowed to help in either one of those questions. They're good observations, but we, we have some policies that address it, but doesn't go as far as to say, this is what you do every time in this situation.
Thanks for the context.
Council on additional questions for staff? Then with the applicant, I'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is John Wardle. My address is 2929 West Navigator. Reading, Idaho, 83642. Happy to be here tonight in front of you, an opportunity to talk about the Rackham East and the Eagle View Apartments. Caleb did a great job. It's always hard stepping in when the project's not your project, but be able to give you an overview of it. And I'd be happy to add some clarity on a few items at the end of my presentation and questions that have already been asked as well. So with that, the applications before you tonight are requests for annexation zoning at a preliminary plat and also conditional use permit for the apartments that we discussed. There are a couple of discussion items that I just wanted to go over through my narrative tonight. One is side access, which is probably the biggest issue. The second one is the private open space, which Caleb discussed. And also just a clarification on some parking questions. Previously Rackham, as it was called, was brought into the city annexed zone with a development agreement. There were a number of uses that were intended and planned with that project, including residential with the original Rackham project that came through. If you went back and you read through the development agreement, that was part of that. The part that we are bringing in today from an annexation and zoning perspective is the part in blue, which is referenced as Rackham East. The the re, the annexation request is for 25 acres, nearly 26 acres, and the preliminary plat part of this is nearly 30 acres. The project, as mentioned, was previously platted on, and these were lots, county lots, and they are going to be re-subdivided. So there is a preliminary plat to modify those as well as the, we'll bring through final plats in the future. All the properties to the south of the blue are zoned, R1 in the county. But in the city, on the city's future land use map, this is all shown as mixed use regional. What I've done here is I've just put the overall concept master plan beneath or underneath it. So you can kind of see how these projects are working together. The original projects with the retail core, office buildings, office buildings here, the top golf. And then we are proposing with this project, the multifamily apartment project as well as a couple of five-story office buildings. Just zooming in just a little bit, as you can see that our preliminary plat boundary here is outlined in red. We do overlap the previous Rackham subdivision, which has been platted. There were two lots there and they will be coming in and with a, a new plat as demonstrated on the preliminary plat. But we are annexing the 25.76 acres and the preliminary plat, which provided is almost 30 acres. As we, as Caleb had mentioned, we are, have two different zones here. One is the commercial zone, which is adjacent to I-84. And then the residential zone, which is shown here in blue, which is the R40 piece. Caleb had mentioned briefly, and I'm just going to kind of note it here with my hand up here, there is a 14-foot strip of land that was when I-84 was planned back in the 60s. There was a small parcel that belonged to a parcel to the north. The property to the south, which was one owner, they owned it at one point, but through a tax cell, they lost it. And so it's unowned by a different owner. Keep in mind, it is 14 feet wide, but we do have a contract to purchase that. We provided the, the seller's part of that to the city. We have a countersign, but I don't have both documents together, but we will provide that documentation to staff so we can clarify that issue once and for all. This is the overall Eagle View master plan. I just wanted to highlight the different elements here in this project as it's all come together. There's a mix of office, retail, there's a hotel, entertainment as well as the multifamily piece. As I mentioned, when the project came through originally Rackham, all those uses were identified here. And as additional property was acquired to the east, the, the multifamily component moved to the east as well as the two office buildings. As a whole, this is a planned, an overall master plan community, which does touch on all the elements that the city wants in a regional mixed use designation. From the retail all the way to the multifamily, to the entertainment, and to the office piece here. This also shows the roads as they come into the property today. Starting on the west side, Eagle Road, you have Rackham Way, which is a ride in, ride out. Silverstone, which is the signalized intersection. And then we also have Rolling Hill. One of the items, probably the item that we have spent the most time on and working with the agencies. One of the items, probably the item that we have spent the most time on and working with the agencies. Well, before I get there, I just wanted to note that the, the comp plan, in terms of comp plan designation, staff did have a very detailed list of how this does comply with the comprehensive plan. But in summary, staff does believe that the proposed development is consistent with the vision of the comp plan for the area per their analysis, which was in the staff report. One of the items that I do want to talk about is side access. We, we've spent a lot of time on this issue to, to work through a way that is provides access to the development, but also is respectful for the residents that are on Rolling Hill. I, I know that a number of those neighbors are online and I'm sure will be testifying. But one of the things that we have spent time on was limiting or eliminating access at all from the development to Rolling Hill. As you know, if you've driven that road, their, their residences, their single-family homes, the roadway is not improved. We, we heard what the residents said and what they, what they wanted. We went back immediately after the first planning and zoning meeting, which there was not an ACHD staff report at that time, and started looking to see if, what the ability to close off Rolling Hill completely for emergency access only, so that we would limit the development, the development couldn't access Rolling Hill Drive. We met with the fire department. We spent a lot of time with ACHD. There was a follow-up report, ACHD issued their staff report just before the January sixth planning zoning commission hearing. And there were two, there were two site-specific conditions that they gave us, kind of option one or option two. Option one was if, if Rolling Hill Drive is emergency access only, then all access, all property or project traffic needs to go to Silverstone where there is a signal. But we still needed to provide the way for emergency vehicles to get in. ACHD requested, as you'll note at the bottom of this one, that they requested an additional review of what all traffic would, how that would impact rolling or Silverstone. And we were able to get that completed and provided to them. Option number two was, okay, if you're going to access Rolling Hill, you need to make improvements on Rolling Hill Drive. Streetlights, curb gutter sidewalk, storm drainage, and that meant that, you know, development traffic would use that road as well. And that was not, as you can appreciate, not a preferred solution. So we've worked really hard to come up with option number one, and we have, we believe all the pieces to make that work. ACHD issued their memo on the fourth of February, that based on the updated analysis, staff is supportive of the applicant restricting Rolling Hill Drive to emergency access only. We have worked with the fire department on how that would work. The one element that we are still trying to work through is the location of where that cul-de-sac will be. We've talked with the neighbor directly adjacent to our property on the east side of Rolling Hill, trying to acquire that easement for that turnaround. We also own property a hundred and eighty feet to the south, where we can create part of that turnaround on that property as well. But the intent is, and let me be clear, the intent is to close Rolling Hill Drive. There'll be a turnaround there for emergency access. If they need to get through, there'll be ballards or some other solution. But this maintains Rolling Hill Drive in its existing state today without impacting or putting that traffic on them. I, I do want to not sidestep the issue that there has been a lot of construction traffic on Rolling Hill already. And that has been a source of great displeasure from the residents. And I, I want to acknowledge that. We've been working, been working hard over, you know, the last few days with our partners, BVA. They, they have worked through ways to, with the contractors, to keep them off of that, to have all the traffic going to rolling, going to Silverstone. Will there be some cars and trucks that slide through? Yes. But our hope is that we can minimize that dramatically. We are also wanting to put three signs immediately on Rolling Hill Drive that would say all construction half access needs to go to Silverstone. I can't close down Rolling Hill Drive quite yet because we need to create that turnaround first. But our goal is to make that happen and make it happen quickly. So it can't close immediately. We're talking, hopefully, within a few months, we can get that closed immediately. But the, the light is at the end of the tunnel and I hope that we can continue to be good neighbors and work through this with our, with the neighbors of the south. Just wanted to cover really quickly, again, there's one item that we need you to act on, and that'd be the waiver to not pipe the Ride and Ball Canal. So in a motion that's made tonight, if that can be included, we'd appreciate that. Regarding the conditional use permit, as Caleb identified, we have three hundred and ninety-six units here, a mix of studio, one bedroom and two bedroom units. The required parking based on the units alone is six hundred and forty-eight units. Where we got caught, and this hasn't come up with any of our other multifamily projects, was the need to calculate parking for the amenity center, which in our view is ancillary. So that came up at the prior hearing. We spent time with staff. We were looking for ways that we could provide more parking near or onsite. And you can see it right here, but we highlighted a little area here to the north where we can provide twenty additional parking stalls directly adjacent to the property. We did talk with fire department, that's acceptable with them. There's no impact. The road is wide enough. But that's the big issue, or I just mentioned that we believe that the site plan as proposed does provide the required parking for the project. The, the one issue I want to spend a little time on are the open space and amenities. We are requesting that, that the studio units not have balconies. The city has a requirement in their code that all units be, provide a minimum of eighty square feet of outdoor private space. And in the case here, we have forty-eight studio units, which do not have any private space or balcony, whereas the other ones do. The overall project does have nearly eight thousand square feet of indoor space contained in a clubhouse, leasing center, gathering rooms, fitness, and three point five acres of outdoor space. This, this is kind of highlighting where these different locations are. We have, in the middle of each building, we have dedicated outdoor space. So it's not tucked away in a corner. It's central to those, those two buildings on the east and the west. And also central to the entire project, we place the amenities there in the middle. So no one is moving, having to move too far in the project to get to outdoor spaces or indoor spaces in the project. The overall amenities, in the center amenities, we have residence lounges, fitness facilities, conference rooms, which are, have become proven to be very popular. There's wifi throughout the project, outdoor pools, patios, that type of thing. And on the two amenity areas, we actually have, they're very similar with a slight deviation between some of those uses. What we're asking for is consideration, as Caleb mentioned, we did request alternative compliance. We were granted alternative compliance reduction, twenty percent reduction, but that came with each unit needing to provide a minimum of sixty-four square feet of balcony space or patio space. Why are we asking for this? We've actually have two other projects where this has already been approved. Two projects out at Ten Mile, at the, at the flats, and also at the new project to the north, which is called Ten Mile Creek, or TM Creek Apartments Three, or All Terror. Those units, those buildings both have studios without private balconies. Don't get me wrong, the, the spaces are important. But we have tried to design this in such a way, i-if you looked at these studios, they really are pretty similar to a, a hotel room, where the desire is you're going to be there, you're going to live there. There's not a dedicated bedroom, but we've offset that with the amazing outdoor spaces that we have between all the buildings we see here, which are centrally located, as well as the community amenity center, which is not by any means. We have not skimped on that. I wanted to just to, I know my time's about up here. I just wanted to highlight what the indoor spaces are going to look like. This is what we just built at the law, at the flats. These are highly amenitized, both indoor/outdoor spaces, get a lot of activity, a lot of use. And then this just, one other thing I wanted to mention was with the project, there is already two thousand lineal feet of the regional pathway that's along the freeway. We're going to add another three thousand feet. So you have nearly a mile worth of outdoor walking spaces to, in concert with the indoor spaces. The project's only required to have two point two seven acres of qualified open space. We actually have three point five, four, nine acres. So we didn't try to, to reduce, go to the minimum on all this. In fact, we've actually, we believe we have raised the bar on both the amenities that are here that are both physical in terms of buildings and outdoor spaces, and do not believe that those studios should be required to have the balconies. I will note that the overall project average is sixty-six square feet on balconies. But that's the break, that's the ratio of those units. So in summary, just to wrap up, we're asking the council to approve our request to accept the private open space as proposed. We also believe, and we've worked with staff on this, but we also believe that the site plan as proposed, we do meet the parking standards and request your approval for the CUP for Eagle View Landing. In your deliberations, again, just asking that we have a waiver to pipe the Ride and Ball, and then also your review and approval of the private open space and the parking requirements. And I stand for any questions. I know I have a couple right off the bat. So we, we can go for new questions or, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm stepping into your lane, so.
Counsel, I will let him address any questions that have already been answered. So we can just put a stop to the time. If there's any questions that were already asked that you can answer before we go to new council questions.
But the first question that I wanted to address was the question on the plat and the buildings. I'm just zooming back here to that sheet. So on our master plan, we're showing two buildings. On our preliminary plat, we're showing six commercial lots. When we plat projects, we are only able to, on a final plat, plat up to, but no more than the number of lots that are proposed. Given that this is a preliminary plat and we are still working through details on the buildings, we wanted to have a little bit of flexibility that if we had, you know, let's say, four buildings instead of two buildings, that those could be on individual lots. So we shot a little bit high on what we needed, but ultimately, we believe this is going to get reduced on a final plat to two lots instead of six. Regarding the, the future land use map of comprehensive plan in the regional mixed use, there's actually a goal in that that there'd be a minimum of, a minimum of ten percent residential in the overall regional mixed use. Now granted, there is, there is a wide variety of residential that exists right now, but this is in the county. And when they come in and they develop those properties, if and when, I have no crystal ball there. But if and when they do, you know, they would also be having to comply with the goals of the regional mixed use. So we feel like as an overall project with the mix of office, retail, entertainment, hotel, and multifamily, we are not just meeting, but we, we've come up with a lot of different opportunities, uses here that add to the regional mixed use nature. Those were the two big questions that were, that I noted just before I got up here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Short ones. John, that out parcel to the north that you're acquiring now, is, is there some provision in the, in the DA for this that requires it also to be an annexation to be applied for at a date certain zoned CG?
As opposed to. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. To answer your question, we have discussed that with staff. It would be best to have it in the city and have it annexed and zoned. So at some point in the future, we would do a cleanup and bring that in and have it be consistent with the other zoning that's right there.
Would it be acceptable to have that commitment in the DA?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, as long as there was flexibility on the timing of such. So as long as it wasn't, you know, required to come in prior to us providing a CCC for, or building permits for the apartments. But if it was just a condition in there, that as we move through the project, yes, we, that would be fine to have that in the DA.
Follow up on that. Do you have an idea of what you think a reasonable benchmark would be?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, if we had a year, I'm not saying that we need a year, but there is that process. We, we have to go out and we have to do neighborhood meetings again. We've got noticing and things like that. So if you would give us the, the latitude to make that happen without a, you know, a hard hammer that's very short, we would appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, last question is a short one. It appears that the previous discussion of how it should be zoned is resolved with you acknowledging and, and agreeing to do R forty on the multifamily.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, that's correct. It would be zone R forty.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Scher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple questions. I'll just start with the first one and go from there. I guess my first question was just in terms of the connectivity and integration of uses. So one thing the city has struggled with, we actually had a graduate student do a study on how we're doing a poor job on our mixed use development of making sure that our uses are really integrated, and especially that there's pedestrian connectivity. You mentioned pathways, but can you kind of walk me through how there's connectivity? If I look at the site plan, and I understand it's a very large area and the nature of the office building is going to need a lot of parking, but it does sort of look like there's a sort of a sea of parking in between uses. But just kind of walk me through the integration of these different types of uses and then the timing of the commercial and when that's coming in connection with the multifamily.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. It's hard to see here and there was, there was an exhibit in the application and I should have brought that into here, but we have made a, a very focused and concentrated effort to provide a lot of connectivity through the site. So yes, there is a sea of parking, as you can see specifically on the multifamily, the number of pathways to move in and out of the site without, you know, minimizing the, the parking lot. When we talk about the rest of the property, it's, again, it's impossible to see here, but there is the, the regional pathway that goes all the way around. And then all of these parking lots have dedicated ways to get to that pathway as well as protected ways to get back to the roadways, which also have sidewalks on both sides. So I, I do, I do hear what you're saying. We, but we have and we do continue to look at all these details. In fact, I know it's an item that's when we do can, the certificates of zoning compliance, your staff is looking at that specifically, making sure that there are logical ways to work through parking lots and getting the pathway systems where the, the crossings are minimized. To the second question, there is a lot of activity that's happening currently onsite in terms of, you know, these retail uses have, have already been built. This office building's been built. This one is built and occupied. This one's under construction now. The Top Golf, they are starting their work as well. Our plan, and I know talking with our partners at BVA, is they, they also are looking to do another office fairly quickly. So I, I can see that there would be a flurry of activity between the apartment projects that we will have and at least one of those office buildings in the next twelve months. You'd see that activity happening in earnest.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. That's, I guess, helpful if you maybe could talk about the rationale of the placement of the office buildings. I'm assuming it's important that those be visible next to I-84. Did you guys look at different configurations of, you know, maybe changing it so there isn't so much parking in between those two uses? Do you feel like it's more important to connect the multifamily use to the entertainment use? And how does that connect? I guess if you could just kind of, and I know you brought up the pathways earlier for the whole site, but it's hard to see them. If you could just sort of walk us through the, the connection, so someone didn't have to necessarily, hopefully not, get in there, you know, pick up to go from their multifamily apartment to play Top Golf, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. The, the office buildings really do orient to the freeway. And the, the only way on, on a building, you know, when you're building buildings that are five-story tall, you do need to have that parking and we've, we have found that having, you know, And we've, we have found that having, you know, and it is, there is a field of parking between the drive aisle that will provide access through and there. But we do feel like this configuration does does work very well so that those buildings are visible. I mean, it is, you will, we have frequently individuals, tenants that are coming who, for them, having that freeway visibility is is very important. So that's the way that these other buildings have been designed, where we've tried to put, you know, these buildings out on the freeway and put the parking back behind, but also put that part between it and other uses. Don't know that I can do this very well, but when we look at this drive aisle that comes all the way through and there's another drive aisle that comes all the way through here, he's actually being built as if they were streets. They have sidewalks on both sides. And so, you know, coming out of the multifamily community, as you can see, if you're coming out of here, you're going to be able to come across the street in a different, few different locations and walk right over to Topgolf. And then you'll be able to continue through in a safe way through the entire project to get to other places as well. There'd also be parallel sidewalks, which are down here along this drive aisle, gets you over to, you know, the food opportunities or other uses and things like that. So it's not, it doesn't show well on this exhibit, my apologies, but the intent is there are pedestrian access has been designed with the project, not as an afterthought, but a primary thought.
Mr. Mayor, one more.
Councilman Schrader.
Okay, thank you. Understood on Rolling Hill, your approach, and I read ACHD's letter and I appreciate them thinking that through. And certainly, this is a real contrast in uses. What do we do in the future? You know, timeframe wise, what if these county properties start to redevelop? How do we undo? This is just a general question, but if it's emergency access now, to Caleb's point, I'm not sure this is the ideal order we would go in, but it's the project before us, how would we undo that? How would we later make it not emergency access if these county properties develop and it doesn't become appropriate anymore to have it this way?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. It's a great question. The the fact that Rolling Hill is a public road. So it's, that option is not foreclosed. All of these residents here have access there. The concern that they have, the residents, as well as ACHD is they're still there. And so the way that ACHD viewed it was in order for Rolling Hill to change or for, you know, for that matter, letting offices move forward and access Rolling Hill, all of these homes would need to be acquired and that residential use would go away. For us, you know, we were, we were going to provide, you know, it's, you see it over here, but when Silverstone comes into the property, there is a, an ACHD approved turnaround and we were going to do the same thing here and we still have that land available to do that. So the point in time that this redevelops and there's no timeline for that and they would have to redevelop in altogether, then that access could happen and access down to Overland Road. Ideally, there would be an access that would occur over a little bit farther to the east. And this is where my cursor is, this is where ACHD, their signal would be. And so there would need to be redevelopment, purchase of properties in order to get over that, over to that location. Because Rolling Hill, as it is currently, if it was improved at this point in time, it would be limited to right in, right out. But the long-term full access needs to happen over on this to the east. So I don't view that it is foreclosed in terms of, you know, nothing has to be undone. But at the same time, we can't force or push or, you know, change anybody's short-term or long-term plans for the property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we agree with that and just for people who are watching, there's no intention for the city to force them to do anything. I just wanted to understand from a long-term planning perspective. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Councilman Schrader. I think you touched on, John, just being frank, that that's my biggest concern about this this project. And I want to appreciate, I know you and your staff went through continuances with planning and zoning to try and and work this out. And I appreciate wanting to be sympathetic to the neighbors. I know Caleb and our planning staff have tried to kind of engage with that, those neighbors over the years, to see if there was some motivation. And clearly, they want to stay as as county subs. And I know there were some concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission about forced annexation. I don't think that's something that we're considering and I want to give comfort to those residents. That said, I've got real concerns about the access. 400 units. Frankly, I'm much more comfortable with a multifamily housing if we're taking access further east. Having cars stack up right there on Silverstone. I I just think that we are going to have some real significant traffic challenges on an already congested road. I'm curious, you know, you group is really, really smart when it comes to this stuff. And I don't know if there is a, an option B. The part that I guess where I, cutting to the chase that I worry about is if I live in that multifamily and I drive past that emergency access every day with the ballards, it's only a matter of time, I think, till somebody tries to take, you know, matters into their own hands and we create a much larger challenge. And so I I don't know if there's a third option you guys have explored. I don't know what it, what it would be. But I'm just wanting to be real upfront that while I appreciate the approach that you took to be sympathetic to those county residents, I don't know if this access plan is in the best interest of the city or your future tenants.
Mr. Mayor, if I, Mr. Cavanagh, if I can maybe provide a little bit more color. The the one positive here on this is the the direction of these trips. So office tenants are going to be coming in in the morning and apartment residences are going to be going out in the morning and that flow reverses. And so I know what you're, I I know what you're saying about the number of trips that will be at Silverstone. Silverstone has been improved, so there are two dedicated left-turn lanes, a through lane and a dedicated right-turn lane. So there is more capacity there. But it it is positive in that the the residential uses and the office uses are kind of going different directions. And so they're not all trying to get out at the same time, they're not all trying to come in at the same time. In fact, there's a gap between the two when they're coming and going, in particular in the evening. Yes, is, is there a, is there a long-term solution that we need to be looking at? Absolutely. I, you know, I, but it would require a big change today to our our neighbors of the south. And so I think if we just all remember that over time, it's important that we do provide for an access up here long-term. But that timing needs to be tied with, you know, the purchase of those properties of the south.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I've got the mic. You guys have done a lot of different type of multifamily projects. You referenced a little bit when you were talking about amenities, you made some comparisons, I think, to TM Crossing. That you're envisioning that this is that same type of a family of facility that you guys plan to open and operate?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, absolutely. One of the things that we have tried to to do is we've been pushing ourselves as we've done more and more projects and we for us, it is, the living spaces are important, but the overall feel for the community in terms of overall amenities, the way when you come into the community, what that feels like and the long-term maintenance is is important. We have, we have noticed, you know, some changes in demographics and the way that configuration of the way people live, you know, singles, twos, you know, families, that type of thing. But given the location here with Eagleview Landing and the office uses, that's why we're really focused on the the studios, the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms. You know, the the majority of these these homes will be one-bedroom units, one-bedroom and studio. And and that that's specific to who will be working out at Eagleview Landing. We hope that, you know, they find a reason to to live nearby. I I will tell you, we have that very experience out at 10 Mile. Can't give you the specific numbers, but I know that there are a lot of people who live in the apartments that are at 10 Mile that are also working in the buildings that we have out there. So it it's good to have that element involved.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I have several. First of all, I want to ask, that was the Farmstead property and it's hard to see what was there turned into hot black concrete. Nevertheless, it was, has there been any consideration made of putting a parking garage out here? I know it's very expensive. It just seems to me like this would be a more usable, functional space, the entire development having less parking lot. So I don't know if you want me to give you all of the questions and then you answer them or one, one at a time?
Let's take them one at a time. Yeah, I'm not going to recognize you just as ask your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perrow. We haven't planned any parking garages at this time. There, there is an opportunity and we've seen this out at 10 Mile as well. We're getting back to that question about having additional parcels and property that could redevelop in the future. But as it stands right now, it it isn't feasible to do parking garages unless you are in a location that is fairly dense in the core someplace or, you know, in the downtown core. Right now, we aren't proposing any parking structures on the property.
Thank you. Then my question. And my next question is in regard to something Councilwoman Schrader brought up, and I appreciate that is how how are you going to transition from the multifamily to the acreage lots to the south? What's the distance between the most southern units and the closest home on the south side? And will you be putting any kind of walls in there, you know, noise mitigation, light mitigation? What is, since Caleb had mentioned, there isn't a code for what the setback would need to be because, you know, that southern property is in the county, what will that look like?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perrow, regarding the setback, as it sits right now from the nearest building to the property line, we're 115 feet. And then there is probably the home on the west side is the closest. They have a barn that's there, but then the home's a little farther to the south. So, you know, 150, 165 feet before we get to that barn structure. Regarding this, we've actually, we do intend to landscape and fence with a solid fence along the entire border here. We do need to, we're looking at in terms of if we can get any elevation on that fence higher. There is a, an existing waterway that's not on our property, just to the south. So we intend to have the fence on our side with landscaping as well. If we can add height to that, we will. But the the idea is that we would be fencing this entire property line. And so from the closest point on any of those buildings to the property line is 115 feet.
Thank you very much.
I will also just note here that we do have a, there is a landscape buffer along the south of the drive aisle and we have a 34-foot landscape buffer between the back of curb and the parking lot as well. So there will be a fair amount of landscaping that happens in there in that core.
Great, thank you. Can you bring up the pedestrian circulation plan?
Do you have that one? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perrow, we did submit one in the application and Caleb can bring that up that relates to our site. I do, looking back at the previous project as well, I know that they had provided an overall pathway plan, but let me just disconnect here for a second and then Caleb can.
No, I meant the one within the multifamily.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
See if there's one just a little bit bigger.
There was one that had blue lines running all through it. Was that? Yes, can you bring that up, please? So I see in the multifamily area that they're running mostly along the sidewalks. What about safety as folks are walking through the parking sections? So obviously, a lot of parking, these are pretty long rows. Are there going to be dedicated areas for people to walk through these parking areas without having to go all the way over in the middle and then come up to the buildings? Because they're going to have to go, if it follows the this plan, they're they're going to have to walk all the way around. So are there going to be sections in between some of this parking where they're going to be able to walk safely?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perrow. Clearly, there are, there are crossings of the drive aisles, and this doesn't necessarily show all of them, but it shows a few of them, kind of how we were connecting to the north. Those are, you know, per your, the UDC, we do have to delineate those as a different material. So that it will be obvious in those parking lots, but it's not, doesn't show here, but through the middle of this core as well, there's east-west pathways coming through here that will also bring you right into the community center in the middle and these places. It it would be great if we weren't crossing parking at all. But actually, the fact that people are able to cross, coming out of their home, out of their cars, right into a unit with with minimal amount of crossing, we felt like this design by centrally or bringing the units into the middle and putting the parking on the outside instead of kind of co-mingling, which then you get into a curvilinear design. We felt like this was a good way to address the pedestrian safety as well as the overall parking requirements for projects like this.
Seems as though folks will always take the path of least resistance. So I would hope there will be dedicated, whether it's, whether it's painted markings in the in the parking lot areas where, you know, folks can walk in between from the carports. You know, it's, I just, I just seems like there's very, very long rows of parking and not any breaks. And maybe, maybe that's what those little rectangular boxes are, are those breaks or are those?
Rectangular boxes end up being
In the strips of parking.
Yeah, the trees, that type of thing. We we have tried and we do this quite frequently, as you'll see here, coming up through here where you have a little wider planner strip, so you can have a pathway going through parking lots. I don't have the details here, but I I do know that we've, we've tried to minimize the number of of crossings to those units. We have found that, you know, a lot of people like to park right at their front door as much as possible. And all of these buildings are rent or, you know, have a lot of parking right up against the homes as well. So will there be some? Yes. We've tried to put all the covered parking elements to the outside, but we find that people, you know, want to get to that service parking into their unit as quickly as possible. They do take the path of least resistance and wayfinding is important. And I know that's also something that the city, the city does require and look at. So we'll make sure that we we comply with the requirements and make it obvious.
Thank you very much. Just one more. The the patio balcony spaces. Can you help us understand more about is it, is it a cost concern? Is it an architectural design concern? Is it? What specifically is the, I I, I think the amenity package is fantastic. I just don't see the downside of 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 having those private spaces. For for me personally, those private, that that private space is really special and important. But I I'm not understanding the downside of having that. So help help us, you know, you as a developer, you're in your business plan and in your design, what is, what is the reason for the request? What is, what is the reason for the request to not include that on the studios? Is it, sometimes these buildings are put together like little puzzles. And so is it, are you actually physically not able to fit? And, you know, a patio or balcony space onto those studios or is it how it looks from the outside? Help us understand that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perrow, great question on the studios. The studios are, are unique in that there is not a separate bedroom. And so by putting a balcony on those, we're obviously, we're moving into a space that's part of their living space. As we have built the, these communities here in Meridian, both the, the flats and also our next phase out at 10 Mile. And these units that are studios without balconies, they're popular. It's, it's a lifestyle choice. Somebody's going to come in and they're going to look at that and it's like, that works perfect for me. It may not be for everybody. Absolutely, I understand that. So then what's the trade off for us? You know, we, we've tried to maximize the amount of living space for that individual who's living in a studio. And the trade off is, we are also providing a lot of outdoor space and a lot of indoor space that they can use to, to be social. These, these are one tenant units. I will tell you that if, if you have more than one in there, it fills. You'll know your neighbors there in your house. So it's, it's, does it add cost? It does. But we've tried to maximize the amount of square footage in these studios so that the living space that they have is top notch and high quality.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mayor.
Sneaking in real quick. One of the only developments where I actually believe only 40 students would be generated based on the unit count. I was really curious about, schools have been a big topic for us though, right? And I'm sure that's not news to you. It looked like in Westy does letter Centennial is listed as a possible school. Can you just walk us through where these kids are going to go to school and what conversations you've had with the district?
Sorry, my iPad shut there. Do you have that letter you can pull up from? I can't get to it. When our, our only conversation that we've had with the school district, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strader, was on that question on Centennial. Because it, it does seem like it's a long ways away. But it's based on where they have their boundaries. Does that mean that they, you know, we, we know that that boundary movements are, are one of their tools that they could implement. And, you know, that may change, but at this point in time, my guess is when they drew the boundaries, they were not viewing this area as generating a lot of high school students and Centennial had the capacity. And so that's, I don't know exactly, I don't know the history on it, but that was, that was the, the only interaction we've had was when that, we saw that as well.
So, so just to clarify, so Centennial being designated as within an existing boundary is what you've heard that, it just really surprises me. It almost feels like a one-off, like they kind of just said, ooh, in the south, we're over capacity. So these kids will go to Centennial, which is fine. I just want to understand if other developments in this area would also go to Centennial. That just strikes me as a really bizarre approach.
I, I kind of.
John, I can say, I was on the boundary committee when this was discussed and and, but it was with the Cloverdale overpass going in and the lighting of Cloverdale and the Mountain View numbers and Centennial was under. So it was a balancing for the purpose. So the students in this area already go to Centennial unless they get a waiver to go into Mountain View.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Overland is the line. I was just looking for that map to see, but I think that's, there's that little piece just south of the freeway that goes that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan.
Mr. Mayor, John, want to go to the open space issue and cover that? We, we know with your prior projects, you, you do very nice amenities. And, and it looks like this one is nice amenities. Right? I'm just thinking through, you're innovative, you, you usually are the first ones out to try something new. And so with, you know, no private space for the outside areas for these studios is, is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. But that means others will follow and it's going to happen elsewhere. So I'm trying to, in my mind, thinking, okay, what happens when the next one comes? My question is, would you classify this as extraordinary space for you, for your projects? Or is it just your good, your top notch outdoor amenity space? And then I could, because then I have to contrast with that with someone else who comes in and says, hey, we have open space too. And it's just big open space with, you know, bocce ball and that's it. So help, help me understand, you know, what comes next in terms of that evolution and Caleb has, you know, talked about the UDC focus group that I think we need to do something. So I guess kind of help me explore this now so we can kind of look down the road for how that works for others that follow.
Mr. Mayor, Council President Hoagland, that's a great question. We've been fortunate with Brighton to be able to have almost absolute control over the design of these apartment communities. To be clear, we need, we need rentals. We need housing. But housing doesn't need to, we don't need to hit the minimum bar. We, we need to be looking at, you know, what, you know, what is meeting the lifestyle needs as best we see fit today? With each one of our projects, we have kind of been pushed to do more. And that's an internal push. What does that mean externally? You know, the, the, the city does have a process and that process right now is the conditional use process. I think that, that gives staff and your planning zoning commission an opportunity to look at these and look at as an entire project. We can all point to multifamily projects here in the city, which have been done really well. We can also point to some where you look at it and say, they did the minimum. I can assure you that we won't ever do the minimum and just hit the bar we did before. We've mixed things up, we've changed things as, 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 as we have done our research and we've gone across the country and we get feedback from our residents. So I would expect, and I would hope that the city council would look for us to continue to raise the bar in all of our communities. Now, not every multifamily project is the same. We might find that there's locations where some of the amenities that are nearby are, it's a good place for multifamily project. And maybe there's a trade off, right? But I think we all need to do a better job in the development community of detailing for the city what our vision is for these projects. And then the city council or the plan zoning commission needs to look at them on a project by project basis. If we're not meeting the standard the city wants, then let's, you know, let's make sure these projects are doing that. We feel very strongly that we're way beyond the minimum. There was even a conversation that came up on the parking issue. You know, we tripped the parking threshold because of these community elements, which we've, we view as ancillary. Well, what's the easy solution? Let's chop 3,000 square feet of a building off. We've still met the standard. We met the parking requirements, but I didn't feel like that was the right solution either. So I Councilman, Council President Hoagland, it's a great, it's a great question. I, I believe that this, this project not just stands on its own, but, you know, really exceeds what the minimums would be. And we feel like we have balanced the, perhaps the trade off of some private open space for studios with a great amount of space, open space for the entire community. In context, the 48 units here represent 12% of the entire project. So most of the project, if you look at the average, we, we meet the overall standard or what we've been granted. But we're just asking that the project specific that we propose in front of you with those private open space be, be approved, given the amenity package with this project as a standalone.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, as a council and as a city, you know, every city has code and ordinance. We have rules and laws that we follow and it's for a reason, obviously. You guys know the reason for that. And when it comes to, and I, and I was lucky enough to sit on the, the comprehensive plan committee with you, John, and with many others and open space committees. And what I'm a huge fan of is, is horse trading every once in a while. I don't think that there is anything wrong with a developer coming up with something that's outside the box that is completely different than what maybe our code says and casts that vision. I think that, okay, you're not going to provide you know, an eight by 10 balcony for a studio apartment. But I'm very familiar with the type of amenities that you have at TM Crossing and also at the flats and they're not your typical amenities. And that's what I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. They're, they're, they're different. They're much nicer, much better. And so I don't mind horse trading and I appreciate you casting that vision. So one question that I had, and I have the same concerns as others too, with regard to the, the, you know, the, the traffic flow and cutting off that one road, I forgot the name.
Rolling Hill?
Yeah. So walk me through why you feel like, because John, as you know, I mean, it's, it's rare that you do hit a minimum of anything with, you know, projects that you do. So knowing that you're nine spaces short of, you know, like, and you say that it's ancillary, walk me through why you feel like it's ancillary.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt. If this was, let's just say they were live work units where that unit had the opportunity for somebody to come there to do business and then leave. Then I, I think we would have a different conversation here. But the clubhouse element, which again, I this gets back to Council President Hoagland's like, you know, there's a precedent set. I'm going to raise my hand first and say, actually, yeah, there was a precedent set. We have not ever provided parking for our clubhouses. The parking count has always been based on the units. And we've always met that. It came up this time. And so then we went back to staff, like, okay, we didn't know that. It wasn't caught. Apparently it's been caught on other projects, but it hadn't never been caught on our, on our projects. And so we were looking at ways that we could provide the additional parking stalls. Again, the if we weren't interested in the overall feel of the project, it would be easy just to chop off 3,000 square feet of amenity space and still meet at the standard, but that didn't feel right. And so we looked for on-street parking opportunities. There's also the question about shared parking. Back to the previous point, we don't want to be required to lock into a shared parking if we're talking nine stalls walking across the street. And that, that would be acceptable. We actually could get that approved through alternative compliance if we had a shared parking agreement in the parking lot for nine stalls. But having 20 stalls right up against the site didn't quite meet the UDC requirement. So there, there's a lot of parking that we are providing here. But there's also, there will be some overflow that happens as well. We don't believe that there will be a parking deficit on this property and the project.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burt.
So if you feel, John, if you feel like there's going to be an overflow parking, how do you expect to fix that? I mean, where do they, where are they going to park if, if there's no parking? You know, if you haven't provided any extra parking, that's close.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt. One of the issues that I, I know you have come before you all the time is people are parking on the residential streets, multifamily projects. If I just go back to the overall site plan here. When Rolling Hill is closed, if somebody comes in here and they park, they're likely parking in the office buildings of the north as an overflow. Given the, the timing of that parking as well, while not ideal, there is going to be a large number of parking after hours on this property and adjacent buildings that would be available. We don't want to be required to enter into a shared parking agreement. We don't think it's going to be necessary or needed. And that was one of the ways that we thought directly adjacent to, like I showed here. And in fact, we actually could do parking on this side as well. We could do parking on this side as well. All those roads are sized that they could accommodate. They're, they're residential sized streets. They're the same size as you'd find in most residential neighborhoods where that allow parking.
Mr. Mayor, John, are you, are you just, I, I guess you're making a little, just more space along that road for extra parking? Is that what you're?
We are, you can't quite see it, but there's, there's a bulb out here on this and a bulb out there and it provides that pocket where cars can park in parallel to the project.
Councilman Burnt.
Mr. Bond, you know, we good there?
That's a yes.
Sorry, Dean, yes. Mayor and Councilman Burnt.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt, I think we'll take a recess before we get to public testimony. So it's 8:13. Let's go ahead and just make it easy for everybody. 8:30, we'll, we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
All right, council, we'll go ahead and come back from recess. When we left, we had finished up with our developer or applicant testimony, presentation, and questions. So, Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we had no one sign up in advance.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody either in the room or online that would like to provide testimony, you may come forward at this time and be recognized for three minutes. Or if you're online, use the raise your hand feature, and we will bring you in to the meeting for your three minutes. We do have someone on, online? Okay. Amy, you can unmute yourself and say your name and address to the record. That's for Amy.
I hit the wrong button. She's coming in as a panelist.
Amy, you can unmute yourself and say your name and address to the record.
Hi, my name is Amy Waddles. I'm a resident at 1360 Rolling Hill Drive. Are you guys able to hear me? Okay.
Yep.
Um, I do want to say, Mr. Wardle has done a really nice job with the development this weekend. I had an opportunity to go out and walk it, and it's beautiful. And, you know, as much as we have a love-hate relationship with that development going in, it's lovely. The one ongoing issue that we've had, and we've talked extensively with Mr. Wardle and planning and zoning, is concerning the construction traffic up and down Rolling Hill. My understanding at the last planning and zoning meeting, the recommendation was made to, part of the agreement would be no construction access on Rolling Hill Drive. So, as you guys, if this project moves forward, I'm asking that that contingency be part of any approval. My understanding, talking with ACHD and talking with Sonya in planning and zoning, without that agreement in there, that doesn't give residents any, well, residents, it doesn't give anybody any power or authority, I guess is a better word, to intervene and provide some support. Just to give you some context, if you all haven't read prior meeting notes or any of the communications, when we're talking about construction traffic, on any given day, we're talking about over 100. One day, a resident counted 130 semis up and down a narrow rural road. One day, I was turning in from Overland, and almost, there was a semi there taking up two-thirds of the road. As I turned in from Overland, there was a parked car on the road and had to slam on my brakes to avoid a collision. We've had an elderly resident have to pull off the road as a semi came barreling down the road. Rolling Hill is a very straight, straight road, and the tendency is to want to speed and go as fast as you can. And it's presenting some safety issues. We're reaching a plate where I'm genuinely concerned. It's a nuisance, absolutely. The dirt, the noise, our house is shaking as semis go barreling down the road. All kinds of issues, but I can't stress enough, we've reached a point where safety is a genuine concern based on some things that have happened the last couple of weeks. So, I just ask that you include that provision, that Rolling Hill not be used as construction access. My understanding from ACHD is on that turnaround, that will be marked with no parking signs to prevent the residents from parking there and just walking over there, or construction workers to continue to access the road. I believe that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony on this application at this time? We have another person online, a couple of people online.
Mr. Mayor, Pam Haynes, you're able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Pam Haynes.
Yes, we can.
My name is Pam Haynes. I live at 1235 Rolling Hill Drive. I have the property to the, on the northernmost point of the existing subdivision. I agree with Amy's comments on the construction traffic, and I do plead that you take heed to that. Her figures are accurate, and her statements are accurate. My comment is that we still don't have any real deal for how the cul-de-sac or turnaround will be placed. And I have a very real concern because I worry about people wanting to turn around in my driveway. So, I would really like to have some assurances from the developer that those, that will be mitigated, that people won't be turning around in my driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, Pam, this is Councilman Hoagland. I wanted to make sure I understood your comment. You're on the northern end of that, of Rolling Hill and, but you're talking about people turning around south of you? I kind of assumed that the turnaround was going to be up there against the boundary of that and maybe Mr. Wardle can address that in his closing remarks. But if you could clarify, help, help give me better insight on that, please.
Yes, sir. My, my property is on the northernmost part of the remaining homes. The property line runs directly north of my property. The developer owns the house directly to the south on the west side of Rolling Hill. In his comments earlier, he mentioned one of two options for the turnaround. One is to put it on that property just to the south of me. The other is to put it on, apparently, he has entered into some kind of negotiation. I have no idea what, with the neighbor to the east of me, Cedergrin, Christopher Cedergrin. In my mind, I don't understand how either one of these turnarounds would be optimal. To my mind, it would be more optimal to have a turnaround to the north of my property, but that would obviously displace his plans for the, the high-density housing. So, basically, that leaves my driveway to the, which is right adjacent to the northern edge of my property and directly to the south of the Rackham Development. That's where people will just make it as an obvious place to just turn in and back out and turn around.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Hi, Pam, this is Councilmember Cavanagh. Can you just clarify for me, is your home west, on the west side of Rolling Hill or the east side of Rolling Hill?
Thank you. My home is to the west, on the west side of Rolling Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any special questions for?
Mr. Mayor.
Just one quick one.
Counsel, Ms. Schrader.
Thank you. Just to clarify and make sure, but you overall, just stepping back, are in favor of closing Rolling Hill to emergency access only to this development, right? Like, you wouldn't prefer for there to be full access and have people able to turn around north of your property?
That is correct. I am in 100% favor of blocking off Rolling Hill except for emergency access.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, should we have one other person that raised their hands?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Blowers had his hand up and now it's down. Guess if he wants to testify, if he can raise, he did. There we go. Mr. Blowers, you can unmute.
Say your name now, just for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Michael Blowers. I live at 1325 Rolling Hill. Just a quick clarification to provide more context and I, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the reason why this, actually, probably the majority of the reason why this road is being closed is because ACHD provided verbiage stating that there's a 2,000-vehicle limit per day and this project would exceed that limitation. So, that's, that was something that was provided after the continuance of the first planning and zoning meeting came back. And since that point, plans have changed and I think it's important to clarify that because there, there could be this idea that there's an alternative option with the current plans that maybe Rolling Hill could be used and my understanding that isn't the case. So, I hadn't heard that number thrown out. I wanted to provide that clarity. The second thing I just wanted to talk about, I've been involved in these communications. I've lived here 10 years. It's been going on, I think, over five years. I'm, I think we have seen this process move this entire time. And yes, we expressed, you know, obviously, we want to stay in our homes. We like, you know, like these properties. That obviously hasn't occurred since half the, or almost half the neighborhood has now been demolished. And, you know, we keep hearing that we're part of this future land use. Obviously, the city wants to do something with these properties someday. My question is, is, I don't really see the current residents, and I know we all have different opinions, so I'm not going to speak for anyone else. I don't really see that, you know, developers coming and knocking on our doors. So, I don't, I don't see that we've actually fought anything to this point. We haven't prevented or fought, you know, any development. So, in the interim, you know, we'd like to be able to live in our homes and, you know, at least have some semblance of what we originally bought into, which was a developed, dead-ended road with no reasonable expectation that a horseshoe would be built around our neighborhood. And so, you know, if the time comes that a developer does want to knock on the door, I'm, I'm just here telling you all, I'm not fighting it and of reasonable expectation. You know, I believe I'm a reasonable person and we'd be willing to talk with people. But in, in the meantime, we want to be able to live in the safety of our own homes, be able to ride a bike on a street, not worry about getting smashed by a, you know, a semi. And we hope that, at, at the very least, city council can see that while we, yes, I know that there's this element that we're in county and we're not Meridian, but I do think it's important that there should be some level of humanity factored in on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blowers. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Council, Ms. Schrader.
I'm just a comment, Mr. Blowers, you know, I think that's a very valid comment and I, and we are trying very hard as the city develops to take into account the importance of having good neighbors and transition. And so, you know, I think we take that comment to heart. I don't think anyone sees you as being totally opposed to development or anything like that. I think it's just, you know, we're clearly, there is a consideration of closing Rolling Hill for emergency access only in the hopes of protecting your part of the neighborhood from all of that traffic and some of the poor effects of having that next to you. It's a little tricky because you are located right next to I-84. But we're definitely going to do the best that we can. And I just wanted to say that I think we empathize with your comments.
Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this application this time, either in the room or online? See no one? Would the applicant like to come forward for final comments?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, again for the record, John Wardle, 2929 West Navigator, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Appreciate the opportunity to stand back up and talk through, just clarify and just address a couple of things that were brought up by, by those three neighbors who I have, have met with each of them or spoken with them or emailed with them a bit over the last 60 days or so. So, definitely want to be respectful of their, of them and their property. That is the reason what we, after the first planning and zoning commission meeting and the question came up was like, do you need it? And so, we went back and we, we analyzed it and ACHD, we worked with them as well to make sure that we were coming up with a solution that would be better than the alternative, which was using Rolling Hill. I do want to restate our position that we do intend to close Rolling Hill Drive. The location of the, the roundabout, or not the roundabout, but the cul-de-sac, it is to be, still to be determined. We, our preference is to keep it south of the property line. You can imagine if it is coming up onto our property and there's not access to and through, people will be coming up there and circling back around. And so, if we can keep it south of the line and put up an appropriate barrier and barricade there, ideally, we will be able to work out something with the property owner to the east. And if we can't, we are aware that Pam is concerned about people turning around in her, in her driveway. And that way, we would put it to the south, no parking signs and do our, you know, everything we can. And we'll work with her as well to come up with a design that, that shortens an already dead-end road. Rolling Hill stops at the freeway. It doesn't, there's no connections anyway. It doesn't go anywhere. And so, we're just trying to pull that back and, and address the other issue, which is traffic construction and make that work. We do feel that the, the request for annexation, the rezone, the preliminary plat, these do fall within the vision of the city. I, I understand what staff is saying, you know, ideally, we'd be starting from Overland Road and working our way north. Fortunately, we're, we're not doing that. We don't have ownership of those properties, but we feel like we do have a very good solution long-term for transportation. And we can do that by closing Rolling Hill at this point. At some point in time, there will be another discussion that occurs on how Rolling Hill does connect. We're, even though we are going to create a cul-de-sac at the end of it, south of our property, there will be a point in time where we need to have that conversation as that area redevelops. And we, we would like to see that that connection be made, but the timing has to be right for that. As for the, the project as a whole, we are aware of the things that, that this council hears from time to time. You know, the, and as it relates to multifamily parking and amenities and things like that, I will, again, restate our, our desire to create a premier project here that's not just get in and get out. The many packages thoughtful, the mix of units is thoughtful, the overall circulation for pedestrians. We've looked at the whole thing. We, we do have projects that do have studios without balconies. You know, your staff is opening up that door for the UDC to review that. I, I think there's an opportunity to look at that. I don't know that there is a reason that there is in the UDC a requirement that every unit, regardless of the size, have 80 square feet. That's what the code says and that's why we've been asking for alternative compliance. There, there's a, another jurisdiction just to the east of you who, who views the combined community outdoor space and community facilities much more important than perhaps that private space from the social connection. And when we do the UDC meetings, we're going to bring and talk about that. But as for this project, we want you to review it on the merits of the project. We ultimately have, have made the, the decision and we feel like the quality of life actually will be enhanced as an overall project as a whole. Again, we, we are looking forward to, again, bringing more residential to locations where we have a concentration of business. And I think this is, is the right location and it's, we've worked on this design several times, you know, and looking at all of the unit mix and feel like this is, this is appropriate for this location. In conclusion, I, we just would ask that the, the planning zone, or the city council, take the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission and approve it with the exception or the note of waiver of that Rydenbach Canal piping. And we also ask that you approve the project with the, the site plan and the information we provided without modification to the private open space and to the parking. And just to note, we, in, we aren't asking for a reduction of parking for the units. We, we've actually met that parking standard. We're just, you know, we're tweaking a little bit the, the parking requirements for ancillary use, which is for the use of the residents. Again, we, we ask for your approval for these projects and I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any special questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Council, Ms. Schrader.
Just one more. So, with Rolling Hill closed, you're putting so much emphasis on Silverstone. If, and let's hope, right, that your project is wildly successful. There are a lot of tenants. If you get to a point that you do notice that you have an intractable traffic problem, do you have any ideas about future alternatives that don't involve Rolling Hill? Is there any, you know, maybe something that, I'm not really clear on exactly what that L-shaped building is that's sort of to the east of you? I mean, is there any other way for you to get an outlet for traffic down the road if you find that this is really successful and you do have a huge problem on your hands that's not easily fixed?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. In terms of access, there aren't any roadways to the east. We have the Rydenbach Canal and the way that those homes were designed, I mean, it's, it's a long road, but there were no roadway connections intended to come across the Rydenbach Canal. Not looking at Rolling Hill as an option, then the next best alternative is to look to see if there's a way to, to move to the east, parallel to the Rydenbach, but on our side and get down to where that future signal would be across from, from the Movado subdivision community there where that, where ACH intends to be a signal. So, that's, that's the next best alternative, which would not put any transportation or trips on to Rolling Hill Drive. It would basically be a standalone collector-type road. So, that's something that we will evaluate and look at and that would, we'd have to look at some point in the future to see if we need to do that. But that, again, would require us to, to work with residents there and, and make that happen.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions at this time, welcome to sit down, but keep your legs rested for getting back up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess, special.
You probably all are aware of this, but I do want to reinforce it or disclose it and not just to you, but maybe those that are still online or in the audience. The, so really, two issues, right, with Rolling Hill, the construction traffic and then short-term closure, emergency access, and then the long-term vision for circulation in this area. I really just want to address first, DA provision 1H does prohibit construction traffic. So, that is in there just to kind of address that. The thing I really want to disclose, though, is enforcement is going to be tough and that's part of the development agreement. So, we can't even enforce it until or if the development agreement's signed and it's annexed in the city. This isn't in the city right now. There's nothing for us to enforce. So, you know, Mr. Wardle, I think, did a fine job and was honest about, it's going to take some time. So, it's not like tomorrow, construction traffic is going to stop. So, I just want everybody that may be listening to understand that, that short of us putting a police officer out there and signs, I don't know what signs are going up, but enforcement is going to be tough. And I trust that the developer will do the best they can to educate all their contractors. Don't use it, don't use it, don't use it. It's going to happen. And I don't know if we're going to be able to write any tickets, just to be honest. So, we've had these things before and so, again, just being frank, you can call and complain. There's just not a lot we have in our toolbox to do what then? If someone uses it for construction purposes, we're going to de-annex the property? I mean, we, we don't have anything in our toolbox. So, I just wanted to be frank and open and honest that sounds good, looks good. We can point to it and say, please, and, and again, I trust the developer will do the best they can, but they aren't driving the truck and it happens. And so, I just want to be, again, real with that and we'll, we'll hope for the best, but there's probably going to be some construction traffic. And if it's happening now, it's, it, we don't have a provision that says Topgolf can't use that for construction. Again, they control some of that and can ask. We don't have an enforcement arm. So, just, just, I won't belabor that anymore, but it's, it's a little frustrating. It's a great solution, but there's going to be a little bit of a lag time in there and, and it could be a long-term problem.
About the timing of those bollards?
Mr. Mayor, to, I guess, provide a little bit more color to what our intent is. Our intent is to get that road closed as quickly as possible. That would happen prior to us commencing any construction on our site. Related to the other contractors that have been using the site, we, we have had conversations, recent conversations over the last few days with the contractors that have been servicing Topgolf and the other office building out there. And they know that Rolling Hill is not an option anymore. Mr. Hood is correct that sometimes Mr. Hood is correct that sometimes that information doesn't get all the way to the end of the row. We this is a theme that pops up from time to time when new phases happen development and we will do everything we possibly can, but the key for us is get it closed, get it bollarded, get it signed and fenced off so that it it doesn't become an access. It only takes you know, one or two people to go down there and realize they have nowhere to go and to not have that happen again, but we will, I had sent an email over to one of the residents today on kind of our thoughts on signage that would be very prominent, but also in the within the right away, but in a way that it could be seen in multiple locations so that we are, we're trying to nip this as quickly as possible. So again, we're talking probably a couple of months to come up with a final solution, but I hope and I'm sure I will hear if it's not the case, but I hope that we have been able to stymie or stop majority of the construction traffic that has been candidly a nuisance for the neighbors over the last forty five days or so.
Question for the deputy chief. Where's the current fire department turnaround on this road?
Currently, there isn't one.
I I've assumed that was the case. So if the bollards, the road was closed day after tomorrow, before even a turnaround could be designed, it really has no different impact on your current ability to service on that road.
That's correct.
So if if that matters to council before they can get the issue resolved, at least it would prevent that sooner rather than later. I mean, quite frankly, put a semi trailer across the road so you can't drive by and have the same effect, but anyways, just want to clarify that there's not a current fire department turnaround access on that road that would be approved.
No, Mr. Mayor, council, it it got wiped out when the whole it it was down at the end. There was a turnaround there and it's now disappeared. So and also since I have your attention, the the John and Mike both have been in contact with me showing their their thoughts on the turnarounds and I've seen what they're proposing. And I think, you know, kind of like with what Caleb's been saying, we can come to something that will work for the turnaround to make it happen. Either if it's at the very end or if it's at that hundred and eighty three foot point closer to Overland, we can make it work to where it it will work for the fire, the fire department and the property owners that will be past that point. So we will still have access to their property and they will still have access to their property. And yet it will be closed off to where you won't get the through the through traffic going through.
Thank you. Caleb, did you have another point that you would also?
Not necessarily point, Mayor, I appreciate it. Just that the right away is still there. So there should be a cul-de-sac at the end of rolling. I haven't been out there and you guys have, so maybe it's got dirt all over it or whatever, but there used to be pavement and a cul-de-sac at the end of Rolling Hill Drive. Maybe that's been demoed with the rest of the homes, but again, it's still public right away. If I want to drive out there right now, I should be able to go down there and turn around.
Duly noted.
Mr. Mayor, if if we can get the support of the city and for that also working with ACHD as we work through the ultimate vacation of the right away to the north to get that closed sooner than later without perhaps putting in a turnaround at this point in time. I mean, we're we're willing to step up and do that. We we were trying to balance the, you know, the minimize the construction traffic, but also ensure that there's not a life safety issue. And that's why, you know, that turnaround is we've noted that, but if there is a an interim solution that we could all agree on that could allow that to happen sooner than later, that would be a much quicker solution.
This information for council and the practical realities of the current situation versus what we're based with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Kick off some thoughts. After hearing the presentation and some of the comment from the public. I think the project's really well designed. From the mixed use regional and the cop plan, zoning this R forty and CG is presented, I thought. And I appreciate the applicant switching to R forty. Did seem to fit more in reading what got us today. So I think that fits really well as well. The those outstanding issues for me aren't a concern. I think the keeping the riding bar open, we've done that in a variety of places for the same reason. So that seems to be appropriate to me as well. The parking solution, I think the nine spots up on the north, I understand that. Quite frankly, I don't think they'll get used. I think the parking that's adjacent to the pool will will garter all of the overflow, I guess, or the additional visitor traffic, perhaps. I don't see the way this is designed. Realistically, folks aren't driving to the pool. Designed very well to try and encourage everyone to do so through the interiors. That wasn't a concern to me and nothing in the presentation changed my mind on that. I appreciate the applicant's remark with regards to annexing the parcel to the north by a date certain, take a one year timeframe if that works for the applicant. So long as there's a trigger to make sure that gets cleaned up and doesn't get left aside. And I I think the the request for a waiver, the private open space here made sense. The finding in the staff report that talks about alternative compliance provides an equal or superior means for meeting the requirements and and I think that's been met with the amenities that are provided, manner in which they're designed, located, superior quality of them. To me outweighs the loss of that limited private open space in the studio. So I thought the applicant's request for alternate compliance is appropriate as well. So I would be supportive of that. Those were the outstanding issues that I catalogued from the discussion. So that being said, I'm supportive of the requested zone, the CUP and the alternate compliance is requested as well as the other conditions I've stated. So I appreciate the applicant's work on it. Just think it's a well-designed addition of the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Yeah, just just a few thoughts, you know. It's interesting when we talk about parking, sometimes you throw out examples. What happens on Thanksgiving? What happens on Super Bowl Sunday? Those times you're going to have people over and, you know, all these extra folks. Actually, there's a lot of parking there to the north. I mean, it's one of those places where there actually is overflow parking available because there's no one working there on weekends or Super Bowl Sunday, that sort of thing. So it's one of those nice times where that kind of kind of fits for for that sort of thing. Mr. Wardle references this. I I think the future will include the property going to the south. I I don't know when that's going to happen. It's just a matter of the timing and as development moves, this is a regional area that which we've planned for. We want it to be a regional area. Mixed use and it's it's coming to fruition and and we've seen it elsewhere where, you know, one acre residential properties or acreages that were out in the country at one time are no longer in the country. Now they're surrounded and and it's just a matter of property owners deciding when that they when they want that to happen and and then they go negotiations begin. As to the open space, I also agree, we're talking about forty eight units, which I think I saw was twelve percent of the development. If you're not a very social person, that's not something you'll want to rent. If you're a social person, this is going to be a great place. There's 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 lots of things. And as I weighed the comments from Mr. Wardle on my mind about, you know, is this setting precedent, different things? It it really is going to be a case by case basis. I I don't know if we can go hard and fast on on everything. This is exactly what happens if you have studio apartments and you don't have private space, then you've got to provide these amenities. I think it's one of those things that will let the developer make their case and they have to convince us if we think, hey, that is really nice. We we can see that working there. We know a lot of urban areas that they don't have those outside balconies or or patios. That's just the nature of downtown and and it is hard to adjust that thinking for Meridian because we have this picture of Meridian still being small town and and we are changing. But even though I must say, as we're changing, we want it to change for the better. So things like these types of amenities are are very, very important. I I think the mayor hit upon a very good solution for closing that street sooner. I I I, listening to the residents out there, I feel for them. That's a lot of truck traffic. And if there's a way we could make that happen without any liability to the to the city, Mr. Neri, I I'd like to see us pursue that if 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 possible. There's no turnaround now. What's the harm? But that's for for those risk averse people to to discuss. So yes, riding ball canal, be keep it open. Or that fourteen foot strip, having a timeframe of, say, a year to to get that under contract. So it's annexed, it's part of CG and that that fits. I I think we can we can see that it wasn't going to be of any use anyway. I think it was going to be in the freeway right away and it can't be developed. So we don't need to see any any easement access to to that point. So I I think those are kind of my main thoughts on that. That go with both these and and Mr. Neri question, I I assume we're going to have to act on each one individually. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And this is, I've really enjoyed the dialogue this evening and I've really enjoyed the the presentation. Well done. Thank you, John. I I I don't think that I never want to speak for everyone, but I I would venture to say that as a council, we always try to listen to the neighbors, you know, the neighbors and of these developments. Any development, I guess, for that matter, their opinions matter and I I think that they have been. I I think it's the thing is crystal clear what their main concern is, and that's the construction traffic. I didn't hear anything about the development itself. I didn't hear anything about the big buildings. I didn't hear anything about, you know, the height and people looking into backyards. I think everyone knows what's going to happen to this area in the future. And so I I really appreciated the neighbor's comments. I wanted to thank the 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 three people that testified this evening. I do believe, and I mentioned earlier in my comments, I do believe in you know, I guess you can call it horse trading when it comes to, you know, hey, we're not going to do this, but we are going to provide this. And I think that you know, looking at that as a case by case basis is really important. I don't believe that we're setting a precedent of anything. I just think that, you know, having a developer think outside the box and do something that's a little bit different than code, but coming up with a a solution to why and a vision of why, you know, with whatever they ask it. And so I appreciate the applicant explaining that. Other than that, I there's my fellow council members have spoke this evening about the other talking points that have been discussed and I'm not in disagreement with them. So I'll just cut it there. Thank you.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate, I always wanted to thank the city planning staff for providing a lot of information directly about the West State School District data. And that's been an ongoing issue that I've continued to grapple with. I think this development locates apartments in a place that makes sense in a transportation corridor. I feel like the unit mix is geared toward urban professionals and folks that are going to live and work in this area. I think that makes sense. I don't think it will contribute dramatically to the overcrowding in the school system. I've done some work on that and I look forward to continuing those conversations on kind of a higher level. And I definitely think in five years, we may have a more acute situation district wide, but I'll save that conversation for another day. I don't, from the data that I've received in the last two weeks, I don't think that it is a currently dire situation. I think that it's something that's going to take place in the next four to five years. So I I don't have that hurdle so much on this particular development. I am concerned about the over reliance on Silverstone Way. However, I do believe that it could be mitigated by the applicant in the future if their development is successful through acquiring additional right of way. I do think holistically that closing Rolling Hill Drive is the right thing to do. I do want to make sure that it can be opened up again maybe in thirty years or whatever timeframe that it makes sense. Sounds like it can be. I think it's well designed and I agree with the rest of council's comments. I think overall, I'm not so hung up about the open space attributed to each unit. To me, this makes sense for a more urban style apartment building. I'm given its location and the amenity package. I wasn't hung up about that. Overall, I'm supportive. I think it makes sense. I do want to just state as the applicant has said that they'll really work on the pedestrian connections and making sure that that's safe and that it's in a thought out way. I think a lot of council had that same comment. So hopefully you'll take that to heart and really make sure that those connections and integration make a lot of sense. Yes, those are my final thoughts.
Councilman Gavner.
I'll be fairly brief. I I agree a lot with what my colleagues have said and frankly, this is going to be a great development. This place, if I was in a workforce housing or wanted to live and work in the same location, I think this is going to be great. You guys are going to have any issues with meeting the demand, I think, of people that are going to want to live here. For me, the issue is the over reliance of Silverstone. And John, in your presentation, you talked about timing. And I think one of the things that your organization does almost as good, if not better than anybody is you address the concerns early on. We heard that with the neighbors here tonight. When I look at this development, there's out of a hundred things, you got ninety nine knocked out of the park. Without a path forward to how to address the traffic, if it's going to be your future tenants, it's just not a project that I get around. So if I don't support it, I just don't think that I can support it tonight. So I'll be voting in opposition. That said, I appreciate the work that you did engaging with the neighbors, true to brand. I think this will be a great project. Reading the teale is kind of where council is tonight. I look forward to attending a grand opening and wishing you well and your success. I just don't think that now is the right time for this particular project.
Councilman Pearl.
I also agree with a majority of what my fellow counsel has stated in support of the project. I have less of a concern about Silverstone, the Silverstone Road itself as I as much as I do Overland and and already seeing where Overland backs up from the Eagle Road intersection way past Silverstone in those westward. You know, westward moving lanes there, it's regularly bad. So I don't even know how people are going to turn right out of Silverstone heading west on Overland because that already backs up so far. So that's that's my concern as far as as the flow of traffic goes, less less so on Silverstone Way itself. However, if ACHD believes that it can be accommodated, then then we have to trust their analysis on that. So a thing I would say that is that, as we discussed, we as council, you'll hear from a lot of neighbors and in a project this size in this location, oftentimes we'll have a lot of public testimony and a lot of neighbors coming to these hearings. And I think it is it is a, it does say a lot about how the applicant has handled the concerns of the neighbors that we don't have a large group here, that we didn't have a lot of public testimony. That indicates to me that the applicant has done quite a bit of outreach and I'm just really thankful for that because we do want the neighbors to be taken care of from a safety standpoint, for sure. And so thank you for John and Mike. Thank you for working well with the neighbors in that area. And that's just really appreciated because we've had a lot of a lot of challenging applications where we haven't been able to resolve these concerns as well as you all have have attempted to do that. So I just wanted to say that. Attempted to do that. So I just wanted to say that. Much appreciated. As far as the specifics, I. I think my council members have, have stated it well. I'm in agreement with wa- waiving the Ryan Bar Canal. In agreement with. With the, you know, the timing of the north boundary, the parcel to the north, so. All of those issues I feel like have been resolved well.
Thank you. Caleb, just one quick question. What year is the Eagle Overland intersection in theory to be improved? Just out of curiosity, is it? No, it was delayed recently.
Mayor, if you give me sixty seconds, I'll look it up.
It's just, just so the community is aware, because that will alter what we currently see. But we're also will top off will alter what we currently see and. The other two buildings going in and Silverstone and Eldorado. I just couldn't remember. I, I couldn't remember if it's delayed by multiple years or just one year.
I think I, I found that Caleb. Intersection of Overland Road and Eagle Road is scheduled in the CIP to be widened to seven lanes, a north and south leg. Legs and eight lanes on, on the east and west legs. And reconstructed, signalized in the future design years listed as twenty twenty-five. The five-year work plan and is listed to be improved between twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-five. And let's see. Overland is also listed as CIP to be widened to seven lanes from Eagle Road to Cloverdale Road. Running twenty thirty-six. And intersection Cloverdale and Overland, which is towards the east side, it's widened to seven lanes and that's twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Appreciate that. On a couple of years, I'm going to be able to say I remember when Overland Road was a one lane road going in each direction. Because I do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
No additional discussion. I move we close the public hearing on. H twenty twenty-one zero zero seven five and CR twenty two zero 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 one.
Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven five and CR twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 one. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, the eyes have it and the public hearings are closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I have a suspicion, sneaking suspicion that the. That urban apartment complexes don't have as many. Patios because they don't want to smell the exhaust, so. Maybe this is a health benefit to everybody that will be living next to the interstate. As for the redevelopment of that county. Property to the south, you know, until we, until all of our empty spaces are built out, I don't, I don't anticipate those kinds of developments. Being purchased and torn down and rebuilt and that's just. So many years out. We still have so much ground that's empty still to fill up, so. My anticipation is that it's going to be a really long time before any of that were to be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I heard what legal had suggested that we break these up. Is it the. Annexation in Platte is one, or can I lump the CUP with that or do the CUP and the. And the. Alternate compliance. Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, I would do fifteen and then sixteen. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
As to CR twenty twenty-two zero 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 one, I move that we. Grant the request. For alternate compliance as proposed and presented by the applicant. As of today's hearing date with regards to private usable open space for each unit. Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perro. Cavan.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
With regard to H twenty twenty-one zero zero seven five. Move that we approve that application as presented in the. By the applicant. And consistent with the staff report of today's date. And that approval would include additional conditions. Noting that the waiver requesting the riding bar canal to remain open as presented would be granted. That. The applicant. Perhaps one year from signing the DA, and I look at legal, the nod. One year from signing the DA to submit a complete application for the annexation. Of that out parcel sliver to the north. To be annexed in zone CG. Within one year from that DA being signed. And that. If that, I think this application also had perhaps with the CUP, the alternate compliance or the open space. And the, and the parking as well that was presented by the applicant is also. Approved as part of this application. I think that covers it.
Second, the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Is there discussion or comments from legal?
Mr. Members of council, I didn't hear Rolling Hill about closing that. Closing Rolling Hill. Oh, yes, including the, the discussion and commitment to close Rolling Hills as presented.
Second agrees.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second with an addition and an agreement. Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt. Perro.
Aye.
Cavan.
No.
Borden.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
Five ayes, one no, and the items are agreed to. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Or for those that like to stick around for the ordinances, you're welcome to stay. There we go. Love it. With that, we'll move on to item seventeen, ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen sixty-seven. Let's the court read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to H twenty twenty-one zero zero two six Hatch Industrial for annexation of a parcel of the land being all of lots eight and nine. Of Heppers acre subdivision is recorded in book nineteen of Platte at pages twelve ninety-eight and twelve ninety-nine. Records of Ada County. Said parcel is located in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section twelve township three north range one west. Ada County, Idaho, and being more particularly described in attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho. And adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of one point five three, one point five nine three acres of land from RUT to IL Light Industrial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Provides that, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law. And providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council. You heard this one, it's red, my tells, they ain't been like, it's redness in its entirety. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Fair, I move approval of ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen sixty-seven with suspension of rules.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen sixty-seven or suspension of the rules. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the eyes have it, the item is agreed to. Next item up is ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen sixty-eight. Ask court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code as codified at title eleven pertaining to the dimensional standards for the residential districts in chapter two. And landscape buffers along street standards in chapter three, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, you have heard this order is read by title. Is there anybody that would like the redness in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number two-two dash one nine six eight with a suspension of rules.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to prove order December twenty-two dash nineteen sixty-eight or suspension of the rule. Is there any discussion? If not, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, the eyes have it and the ordinance is agreed to. Council, anything under future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. I'm favoring signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the eyes have it. We are adjourned.